That is a punitive action directed at neighborhood councils, and this is a shameful motion, Mr. Smith. This is... If you want... First of all, I support and would move that we send the amending motion back to the review commission, or not to the review commission, but to the committee, to allow us the opportunity to fully vet this issue. I have no problem with looking at whether or not we have to have an additional level of ethical scrutiny here. No problem with that. And we have made that statement over and over in the committee. But to suggest that if the councils have the audacity to introduce a neighborhood council file, that then they have to fry to a new level of scrutiny, that is ludicrous. And I oppose this motion, and I hope my colleagues agree.
Is there a second on that motion?
Mr. Smith responds to the request to send his amendment to committee.
Mr. Alakon, I think it's truly unfortunate that you'd use words like ludicrous and shameful when talking about the opinions of any member of the city council. I would never, ever say that about anybody that serves in this body or in that audience. This is what democracy is about. You have the right to express your ideas, and that is what democracy stands for. You have a right to express your ideas, and I'm sorry you don't like my idea, but I would never say those kind of things about you. So, really, it goes back to the very crux of the motion. The crux of the motion is, members of the neighborhood councils, should you choose to change the hat you wear? From an advisory role to a legislative role, you need to play by the legislative rules. I think the idea of amending this today is appropriate because of the change of definition of what neighborhood councils are supposed to be about. If they choose to do that, then they play by the new rules. It is not punitive, Mr. Alakon. It is merely saying that if you want to change the role you're in, then you play by the new rules of the role you're going to be in. That's a very simple, not complex, decision. You can remain advisory if you want, fine and dandy. God love you, thank you for serving. But if you want to be a legislator, you want to write legislation, then play by the rules that everyone else does that, whether it's my staff, a commission, or this honorable city council.
This is now the final package as amended. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Thank you very much, colleagues. And joining us now by phone is Los Angeles City Council member Greg Smith. Mr. Smith, always good to have you on Council Week in Review.
Yeah, it's always good to be here.
Neighborhood councils, how important have they become, and what kind of relationship do you have with them in your District 12?
Well, the neighborhood councils really are a real point of energy, really, for us. I have found a lot of great ideas coming forward to them, and I think it's because, you know, I represent 258,000 people, they represent 20,000 on average, 25,000. They have a much closer connection, I think, to the streets, the neighborhoods where they live, so they come up with really great ideas, quite frankly, and I've introduced a number of motions at their request, too. So, we've got a great working relationship. I have a monthly, what we call Neighborhood Council Cabinet Meeting, where I meet with representatives from all the neighborhood councils in my district, usually with one of the general managers or another department comes in and talks about what they do. So, it's a very good connection, and I think we have a very good working relationship. There's always spotty problems here and there that develop, but for the most part, we have a very open and good working relationship.
We just saw a unanimous vote to allow neighborhood councils to submit council files, council files being proposed as a fraction, of course. There's an argument that says this moves neighborhood councils from advisory to legislative bodies, but it was seen without the power of approval, it would still remain advisory, I presume?
Yes, and really, the argument came down to not whether or not neighborhood councils should be allowed to introduce files. Everybody agreed that portion. The question is, when you change the road, do you change the requirements? I introduced an amendment to that, to say that if a neighborhood council chooses to introduce motions, that they've changed the role, and the role in the charter is to be advisory. But if you're writing a legislation, which is what introduction of a motion does, it writes legislation, then your role changes, and with that role becomes other requirements, I think, for the people to understand, as far as, and us as legislators, to understand that when a motion comes to us through a neighborhood council, we want to know that it is not in any way colored by inappropriate action and/or thought process. When I run for office, and as I serve every year, I have to fill out a form disclosing all my financial interests, including stocks I may own and properties I may own that could be affected by city law, so that the people know that when I do something, I have no interest in it, and I have no financial gain from it. And if I do, I have to recuse myself. When you want neighborhood councils to have a legislative role, they really are wearing a new hat, and that new hat, under state law, really requires financial disclosure. And I think all of us pretty much realized that was a concern, particularly because we've had a couple cases in the past where neighborhood councils were tried to be infiltrated or taken over by special interests. And so, I think we just need that clarity, that in government, that people know what's behind what's going on.
So, it's your position that they, by making this transition, do become legislative bodies in a sense?
Yes, they do. And I don't think there's a, you know, one of my colleagues argued that, no, there isn't, because we still have the vote. But I would counter that by saying that there's also other precedent for it. Our city commissioners have votes, their volunteers also, they fill out the form. My staff, which are paid full-time, don't have a vote, but they do fill out the forms, too. And so, whether it's volunteer or paid, the issue really is insignificant. The point is, they're acting in one way or another on things that become laws. And whether it's a voluntary role or whether it's a paid role, when you have input into the system of writing laws, you're a legislative function.
Now, what you're referring to when you refer to fill out the forms, you're talking about, I believe, what's called Form 700. How extensive is that form, and what information does it ask for?
Uh, Form 700 is not extremely extensive. It does ask you what property you own, what interests you own in financial institutions that may be gaining from this, or any stock or bonds that you may own that may benefit from actions you take. For instance, a few years ago, I had a Walmart in my district that was being proposed. At the time, I owned stock in Walmart. Would it be appropriate for me to vote on that matter? Because if theoretically, even though it's thousands and thousands of Walmarts, the addition of one more Walmart adds value to the corporation. So, theoretically, it adds value to my stock. I ended up disposing of my stock and not voting on the matter for at least six months, which the case took a year, it was fine, and then you say I had no financial interest in my decision anymore.
As you know, some of the people who were not in favor of your amendment charge that implementing the, yes, of Form 700 creates a mountain of additional paperwork, might turn away community members who might otherwise get involved. Who's going to be responsible for processing and tracking these new submissions, and do you believe people will lose interest in becoming active in their communities?
I don't think so. It's something you live with when you want to be in the public's role. Do I enjoy doing it? Not particularly. I have to actually, you know, have people in my staff do it for me and keep records. I don't think it's that onerous. It's only a couple pages that you just check boxes mostly. Where it'll become cumbersome for some would be where they own stocks they don't want people to know about, maybe. But this is a choice they will make. If they want to introduce laws, then they'll have to play by the same rules as everybody else in the state of California that introduces laws. And I think it's just a basic concept that this is the law of the state of California, it is the law of the city. If a neighborhood council chooses to enter that realm, then they need to play by the same rules as everybody else.
I'm sure it did not escape your attention that there was an editorial in one of our local papers suggesting that the city council is not being consistent here. When financial disclosure for volunteers is okay on one hand, but on the other, financial disclosures for police officers, in order to comply with a federal court order, is not. How do you respond to that criticism?
Well, it's very simple. What we're asking, and I was very much opposed to what's going on with the police department for a couple reasons. One, the people, the only people in the police department that have been asked to do this is a certain couple of units. Every officer, before they hire, goes through this same process in much greater depth, in fact. They don't just fill out a form, but police officers actually go to check them out at their financial institutions, they knock on neighbors' doors, they interview friends and foes, anybody they've had contact with, if it's a ploy, et cetera. Neighborhood councils don't go through any of that. So, when we hire a cop, they're already been really cleared by a much, 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 much more extensive process. Now, on the job, they're being asked only in certain units of a police department to file this form. People dealing with gang units, dealing with narcotics and prostitution, and major crimes. And not just major crimes, but also the organized crime. These are people that want, are dealing with a lot of money and drugs, et cetera, but these are also dealing with people dealing with the most dangerous elements of our society. And if we put that kind of restriction on them, that they have to disclose personal information that no other cop has to disclose, for one, no other cop in America, including the FBI, has to disclose publicly. But my greatest concern is that with all the good intentions of the chief and the department to take these forms and lock them up, a judge can unlock that file anytime and give it to a defense attorney in a case. And we've had lawyers in this town like Steven Yagman, who is now in jail, who is one of the dirtiest lawyers in town, he's now under federal arrest and in jail. I don't want him looking at our police officer's personal records, because he has the ability, and I think he would have sunk to the level, of giving that information to the people that we're trying to put in jail, so that they could discredit the cop. And you do that by creating false IDs, false deposits in their bank, all that kind of stuff, and setting them up. We can't put police officers at that kind of risk.
Oh, we appreciate your responding to the criticism that I'm sure a lot of people read in the paper. District 12 Councilmember Greg Smith, thanks very much for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Always my pleasure, Jack.
Also joining us by phone is the Chair of the Education and Neighborhood Committee, Councilmember Richard Alakon. Mr. Alakon, welcome to Council Week in Review.
How are you doing?
Terrific. Neighborhood councils, after the unanimous vote on Tuesday, as you know, now allowed to submit council files, but limitations for this two-year pilot program are in place. What are those limitations, and just how will the new program work in your judgment?
Well, we, in consideration of all the hue and cry about potential damages that might occur from overburdening the system with neighborhood council files, we put a cap of three per neighborhood council per year, and they have to be seconded by another neighborhood council. My preference was that we do do the cap, but not have the second, but in committee, negotiated with my colleagues, Janice Hahn and Dennis Zine, and we agreed to come up with this formula.
Would it have to be seconded by a neighborhood council that is in the same council-mannage district?
No, no, any neighborhood council. And, you know, I think it's a tremendous victory for neighborhood councils, first of all. I'm hopeful that we get very substantive and positive council files going, generated by the neighborhood councils, and I expect that, you know, there may be some quirky ones, but then again, the city council introduces quirky motions every once in a while, so I'm hopeful that we see very good motions emerging and it contributes to the city.
You said during the council session that at the end of two years, if this is successful, the program would be expanded. What would that expansion look like, do you think? And perhaps more importantly, how would it be determined if the pilot program was successful or not?
Well, that's a determination for the city council and the mayor, and I think, you know, it's subject to a lot of scrutiny and input from the public. Obviously, we have several mechanisms. There's the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, there's the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners, as well as the councils themselves, so there's plenty of input on this subject, and we'll make that assessment when the time comes. The kinds of expansions that we could see, we may lift the cap on neighborhood council files, we may expand their authority in other areas, I don't know. I think this is an evolution, an evolutionary process, and we want to give them as much power as they can handle in a way that contributes to the city.
As you know, there was some division among your colleagues as to whether neighborhood councils, because of this vote, would have moved from being advisory to potentially legislative bodies. What's your view on that?
Well, technically, I think it does increase the responsibilities to quasi, we call it a quasi-legislative function, but the difference is that they can't vote on it. And, you know, so while they can introduce something, giving them the legislative function, it doesn't have the power that most legislators or elected officials do have.
We saw a few minutes ago that you were not in favor of the amendment to have the boards and elected members of neighborhood councils submit Form 700, that statement of economic interest. Why not? And shouldn't there be something in place that ensures at least transparency in government, even at this level?
No, actually, I've been very supportive of increasing the scrutiny on the neighborhood council system to avoid any ethical impropriety. The problem is that the motion was introduced then, it hasn't been vetted, I did not have the opportunity to go through it in committee. Let me give you one specific concern that was raised by the city attorney, and that was that the Ethics Commission has never had the responsibility to ensure that neighborhood councils or any other entity were performing ethically with regard to the Form 700. So, this is giving them a new responsibility, and we're going to have to check with them to see if they can even manage this thing. We're talking about potentially 2,700 forms. So, we've said that you can have the neighborhood council file, but if you choose to do so, you're going to fill out these forms. I saw that as sort of punitive, I thought we could have handled it better, and I also think we should consult with the Ethics Commission and the city attorney to find out the best way to scrutinize the ethics without overburdening the system, and I don't think this is necessarily the best way to do it. But I don't have a problem with it. The 700 form is a relatively simple form to fill out, it's really not that much detail, and that's not my concern. My concern is that the Ethics Commission has been given something that they've never done before.
Of course, you've held a number of public hearings on the report that came out of the Neighborhood Council Review Commission. Any more of those hearings planned?
We have to continue the work, finish the work that we started. The review commission submitted 73 recommendations, we've sent 60 on to the city council. So, we're moving very rapidly, and my commitment is to finish by the end of February and send them on to council. And, but I have to tell you, it's a phenomenal body of work that was conducted by the Review Commission, involving the community at every level, and I think they did a tremendous job. And at the end result will be a more empowered neighborhood council system, but with much better organizational strategy. And the particular benefit of this, these recommendations is the election process will be managed by the city clerk, and I think that is going to calm the waters quite a bit.
Before we let you go, I want to give you an opportunity to respond to something. No doubt you saw there was a critical editorial in a local newspaper suggesting the city council is not being consistent. When financial disclosure for volunteers is okay on the one hand, but on the other, for police officers, in order to comply with the federal court order, would not be appropriate. How do you respond to that?
The scrutiny of the police department is driven by the consent decree, and I think the general sense of not just the city council, but I think the mayor as well, is that we may have gone over the top. One of my concerns, for example, is that if we overburden the internal affairs divisions with knowledge about information, economic information of every officer, they may not be able to focus on those officers that really need to be focused on. So, there are some bureaucratic issues, as well as the question of privacy and civil
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council meeting for Friday, January 25th, 2008. I'm City Council President Eric Garcetti, joined by my colleagues, Richard Alakon, Tom Labange, Jan Perry, Ed Reyes, Bill Rosendahl, and we are awaiting the following other members, if they will make their way down. Ms. Gruel, if you'll please join us, Mr. Parks, if you'll please join us, Mr. Smith, if you'll please join us, and Mr. Wesson and Mr. Zine. Mr. Cardenas is excused today, as is Mrs. Hahn, Mr. Weezer, and Mr. Weiss. We are televised live on Channel 35, on the city's cable system, and also rebroadcast in the evening. We are webcast through our city's homepage at lacity.org, and available through our telephones at 213-621-CITY, which is the Los Angeles City Council's phone service, to listen to any of our committee meetings or our full council meeting as well. On Fridays, we have special presentations to members of the community, and I know that we have a number of presentations that are going to happen shortly. We would like to begin the presentations today by recognizing Councilwoman Jan Perry for our first presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I would like very much for Mr. Ellis Stanley and his wife to join me at the podium. And I know as other council members come in, some of them may join us at the podium, and it's an enormous honor to recognize the outstanding career of Ellis M. Stanley, Sr., our former general manager for the Department of Emergency Preparedness. Ellis Stanley, Sr. began his career with the City of Los Angeles in September 1997, and after 10 years, retired on December the 4th of 2007. So, I wanted to take this opportunity to wish him well and honor him for his work. Ellis's first position with the city was the Assistant City Administrative Officer overseeing the Emergency Preparedness Division of the Office of the City Administrative Officer. In 2000, Ellis was instrumental in elevating the division into the city's very first Emergency Preparedness Department. Prior to accepting his position with the city, he was the Director of the Atlanta-Fulton County Emergency Management Agency, a position he accepted in 1987, and earned his Certified Emergency Manager accreditation on August 23rd, 1993. Mr. Stanley has been the Director of an Emergency Management Program for more than 30 years, serving in North Carolina, Georgia, and here in California. He has served as the Vice Chairman of the American Red Cross Board of Directors Disaster Services Committee. He is a recent graduate of the inaugural Executive Leadership Program for Senior Homeland Security Officials from the Naval Postgraduate School in Monterey, California. He is also a graduate of the Leadership Durham, Leadership Atlanta, Leadership Los Angeles, as well as the Center for Creative Leadership in Georgia. Mr. Stanley has been a leader and a mentor to many across the emergency management profession, and has led delegations of emergency management professionals to both China and Japan. In 2001, Mr. Stanley's office was awarded a Los Angeles Area Emmy for producing the public service announcement, Emergency Preparedness Patrol. And in 2007, Mr. Stanley was nominated as a Fellow of the National Academy of Public Administration. And I wanted to thank Mr. Stanley for the contributions that he has made to our city. And our, Mr. Parks is going to join me in just a second. Mr. Stanley's hard work and dedication to our city has set a very high bar and an extremely positive example for public service, and I wanted to publicly thank him for his commitment to our city and his accomplishments in his role as general manager. And now, before Mr. Stanley speaks, and I think some of his former coworkers, I'd like to ask Mr. Parks to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Perry. I am pleased to be here and honoring Ellis. I think it was a great addition to the city when he came to us from Atlanta. He certainly has created a situation in which emergency preparedness has been brought to the highest level. Those that have been around the city for a while remember emergency preparedness was being dealt with in CAO's office several years ago. It was very difficult to get other departments, other than the police and fire, to even view themselves as part of the emergency preparedness arena. And subsequent to that, we now have a department, and now with the issues of Arrowhead on an annual basis, this whole city collectively deals with emergency preparedness better than any city in America. And I'm just pleased that Ellis, for the last 10 years, has put his mark on that operation and to upgrade and find a way in which this city now can basically take credit for impacting the rest of this country as they look at emergency preparedness. So, Ellis, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we are also joined by Mr. Councilmembers Wesson and Labange, who would like to say a few words regarding Mr. Stanley.
You go first. You're taller. Here we go. The beautiful thing about the 4th and the 10th Districts, we're always prepared, because Ellis Stanley taught us. I'm just pleased, and I'm so thankful that we honor him today. I know there's a great celebration tonight at the African-American Museum in Expedition Park, but we see today with the storms, and there's more storms a-comin', that we have to be prepared. And one thing that Ellis Stanley did is he helped Los Angeles be prepared. I'm very proud of, because you elevated this department as Councilmember Parks, then Chief Parks, saw the need and helped advocate it for a person, not just in a office, in the CAO's office, but a general manager who fights for awareness of preparedness and coordination with all the departments. I thank you very much, and I want to tell you Recreation of Parks was prepared today because of all the storms the last 24 hours, their work in the previous weeks did not allow severe mudslides or flooding in Griffin Park, so... But I do have a problem on Rossmoor with storm drains, so...
Got a new head now. Call him. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President and members, and, you know, I'm sorry that I, in fact, not I'm sorry, I'm glad to stand before you today, at least shortly after 10:00, and say in the 10th District, I do not have cars floating down the street like Mr. Labange. So, Mr. Labange, I feel for you and your people over in Hancock Park, but I'm glad it's you and not me, okay? Anyway, with that said, Ellis, there's something about being a public servant. And this man, Ellis, has spent a lot of his adult life doing the best that he could to help prepare others to keep themselves safe. He was a public servant. And the one thing about being a public servant, you never really get the pats on the back or the atta boys or the show of appreciation that you deserve. So, I'm really glad that Jan moved in this direction, because Ellis, you've been a phenomenal public servant, and you should be proud of that. The City of Los Angeles is a much better place because of the time that you invested in us. Thank you, and good luck in the future.
One surprise speaker we have is former mayor James Hahn, who's here to say a few words about Mr. Ellis Stanley.
Mr. President, members of the council, I am so... Mr. President, members of the council, I am so pleased to honor Ellis Stanley. I worked closely with him, not only as mayor, but also as city attorney, and I really appreciate what he did to get us prepared as much as we could be. One thing we know about being here in Southern California, almost anything can happen and probably does. And we probably are an area that is looked to for leadership, and Ellis Stanley provided that leadership. We were nationally recognized as the kind of city that had a department that really was forward-thinking. The conferences that Ellis organized nationally, the Arrowhead event every year where we would go up and do tabletop exercises to try and figure out what we would do if something terrible really happened. But more than anything else, Ellis was just a wonderful, wonderful human being, a great guy to work with, and I always used to tell him, "It's better to be lucky than good." And so Ellis, since you've been here, we've managed not to have any earthquakes, and we sure hope that doesn't happen now that you're leaving. But I understand that you won't be leaving, that you're gonna be keeping... You're gonna be staying here in Los Angeles, so I know you're gonna be our good luck token, and I wish you the best, and I really enjoyed working with you over the years.
And we've got a few other council members as well that would like to be heard, starting with Mr. Rosendahl, and then Mr. Smith. Mr. President.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, everybody. Ellis, let me tell you this. I've gotten to know you over the last two years as an elected official here, and you know my district is very engaged in absolutely everything that's going on in the world, and boy, do they care about all these issues of tsunamis, earthquakes, and fires. We held three town hall meetings, one in Westchester on earthquakes, we held one in Venice on tsunamis, and we held one up in the Palisades on the fire potential in the canyons, and you were fantastic. You contributed to my community such a sense that we're really on the right mark, that we're doing the right thing. The confidence you build in our folks was extraordinary. My folks aren't that easy to please, as we all well know, and I gotta tell you, the leadership you showed on behalf of this great city was phenomenal, and I will always remember it. I'm sad to see you go, because I wish you would stay, because we really need you to continue the great work you did, but bless you for all that you've done for our great city. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Well, Ellis, I have enjoyed working with you first as a chief deputy and then as a council member. What I really enjoyed about working with Ellis was his generally southern manners. He was a joy to work with all the time, and what I saw was a department that went from an Emergency Operations Committee years ago to a real department and grew and ballooned into something very big and important in our city, and Ellis was the general who made that happen, the guy that brought that to fruition to what it is today. But I didn't realize how important you were for Los Angeles until I went with you recently to Mexico City to go to an international conference on earthquakes, and everybody from all over the world came up and said, "Where's Ellis? I want to talk to Ellis. Is Ellis here? What's he doing? I want to see Ellis about this or that." He had an international reputation as not just the guy from LA, but the guy who knew earthquakes and knew disaster planning, and that was a great, great tribute to the City of Los Angeles. And I was so proud to be there with you, as these people from all over the world really paid a great tribute to you in LA, that we picked the right guy as our EPD guy. And so it's a pleasure working with you. I'm gonna be at your dinner tonight, look forward to that, to say goodbye officially, but I know you're not leaving, because we're gonna have the International Earthquake Conference here this year in November, right here in Los Angeles, and all those people from around the world are gonna come in and say, "Where's Ellis? I'm coming in to see Ellis, not the City of LA." So thank you for being, Ellis. Thank you for doing what you did for the people of LA, the footprint you leave here, particularly in the way of preparedness for earthquakes, which we know are coming, which is gonna decimate this city one more time, that we're better prepared than any city in America, and I thank you for making that happen. God bless you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm pleased to stand with my colleagues to acknowledge Ellis Stanley, and hope to gather tonight with you as well to celebrate your time here in the City of Los Angeles. But I know that for many of us, Ellis, you were everywhere. It didn't matter which part of the city we would be at, there would be Ellis Stanley talking about being prepared and having a system in place. You were very well respected as someone who could get things done, who rolled up your sleeves to work very hard to make that happen. And as someone who has lived through a lot of earthquakes and was here in the federal government when we had the 1994 earthquake, which we had the anniversary just a week or so ago, we know how important it is to have emergency preparedness and to have someone at the helm who could coordinate all of those departments and do an excellent job. And so you will be missed by the City of Los Angeles for all of your efforts, but even more importantly, as a friend and someone who was known not only across the world, but across the City of Los Angeles, too. The people of the city owe you a debt of gratitude for your efforts. So congratulations on your retirement, and glad you're gonna stay here in Los Angeles. So, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, Ellis.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zine is our next speaker.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Ellis, you never forgot the San Fernando Valley. I remember the fairs that you had, the displays that you had. You came out to the San Fernando Valley a number of times at our shopping centers, emergency preparedness to remind the people of the valley. You never neglected the people of the San Fernando Valley. I want to acknowledge that. So you took care of everything from the west side, the south, the east, and particularly the San Fernando Valley. I want to commend you on that. Technology, you were always ahead of the curve, trying to bring a new technology to advance the curve for Los Angeles to be prepared. So I want to congratulate you on your retirement, a job well done protecting the people of Los Angeles. That was your watchword, protect the people of Los Angeles, any and all emergencies. And when we have this deluge of rain, the flooding that's taking place, landslides, Ellis, you were always there to make sure people were well-prepared, so we're gonna remember that. God bless you and your family, and best to you in the future, and thanks for all you've done for the people of LA and the San Fernando Valley.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, and let me as well add my good wishes. Ellis, I want to thank you. I've seen your leadership in action. It's been extraordinary to be a part of. We all remember that day on 9/11. I was a young council member who had no idea how our emergency operations worked, and I saw the clockwork, I saw the precise teamwork, and I saw the city come together at a moment when we did not know what the future held for Los Angeles. And you did a lot to reassure the city and to make sure that we were safe and prepared, and those lessons from that day are certainly ones that you've taught me, carrying forward how to prepare for any emergency, whether man-made or natural. We have had a great national leader here, and we've been very blessed, and Los Angeles is a much safer place because of you. So, thank you and God bless you. We look forward to welcoming you back to Los Angeles sometime soon.
And before we close with a few words from Mr. Stanley, one of his former colleagues wants to say a few words on behalf of his department.
Yes, good morning. I don't think I can even echo Anna Burton, the Assistant General Manager with the department. I stood by Ellis for the 10 years that he was with the department, and to say it was a pleasure and a learning opportunity is really understating what happened in the department for the past 10 years. We became a department, we've grown, we've seen things, and under Ellis's leadership, the whole profession of emergency management, and I speak not only for myself, but for the entire international community of emergency management. Ellis personally took the opportunity and every step he could to elevate it and make sure that we continued to grow. He continued to train his staff, to emphasize to his staff the importance of continuing the training, to outreach, and to make sure we understood what was happening not only here in our own backyard, but around the world, so we could take those lessons, apply them here, and continue to make Los Angeles the most prepared city in the world. And it has been my pleasure and my honor, and I thank him personally every day.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Burton. And now, a few words from Ellis Stanley, who is joined here with his wife today, and I think one thing I'd really like you to just tell everybody listening, you've got a recent appointment which will enable you to continue to give your expertise to the City of Los Angeles, so that we won't lose the benefit of your expertise in the area of homeland security. I think it's important that you share that with us today, so that everybody knows we'll still get to work with you.
Thank you, Councilmember Perry, or as I should say, my councilmember, I live in the district. Yes, I was just recently appointed to Homeland Security Advisory Council's Committee, and I am gonna still be involved in emergency management, I'm gonna still be involved in the community. And one of the things that I guess most important to say, not just to you as executive and elected officials, but speak on behalf of the community and the citizens and residents of this great city, how involved they have become and how they have taken ownership in the preparedness effort in this city. So you have a great group of partners in preparedness, including yourselves, including the neighborhoods, including the private sector, including the universities and colleges around here, so I want you to know that that is going to continue, and that will, whether I'm here or anybody, that's gonna continue, because we know that Los Angeles and California is gonna continue to have disasters, both natural and man-made. Secondly, it is nothing that has occurred here could have happened without a great team, and I was fortunate to inherit a team and also build a team here, including the great staff with Anna Burton and the team of the Emergency Preparedness Department. And as Greg Smith always said, we've got 52,000 emergency preparedness around here, looking at the entire city family, and that is most correct. We do have, and we have a lot of energetic, well-trained, and motivated people to make sure that we are and continue to be the best prepared. So with that, I want to make sure that you understand that they are primed to do that. I also want to again thank the members of the respective organizations, and when I talk about private sector, I'm talking about bringing those resources to bear that help, as I think Greg Smith talked about, technology, helping us to take advantage of the technology and things. Lastly, none of what I could do or have done in my life would have meant anything, or I wouldn't have been able to do it without the support of my wife, Iris. Iris has been with me... Been with me 33 years, plus years.
Long time, Iris.
That is a long time, and we don't do the 50/50 thing, it's a 100/100 thing, because she brings a lot to the game, and I want you to know that she's been behind me and that I could not have done any of this without. Mr. Mayor, thank you for your guidance and leadership while we were together, and thank you for being here today. And the final thing I have to say, when I first got here, you haven't been introduced to Los Angeles unless Tom Labonge has done it, and he got me in his car one day and really showed me Los Angeles, and Tom, I will always be indebted to you for that. But thank you all so much for the opportunity to serve, the opportunity to serve with you, the opportunity to serve for you, and the opportunity to serve the great city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and Adam Clark, if you'll please call the roll.
Alacon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
We will go back to the presentations very shortly with a special presentation on African-American History Month coming next, but we will run through the agenda quickly as well while we have the members present here, so if we can take up the first items, please.
Approval of the January 22nd minutes.
Ms. Gruel moves, Mr. Zine seconds, without objection, those minutes will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right, Mr. Wesson moves, and Mr. Parks seconds, without objection, those will be approved.
Mr. President, would you like to go through public comments?
And now, let's hold public comment, run through the agenda, please.
Items number 1 through 7 are items known as for public hearing. These are streetlighting items. Recommendation for council action is to continue the hearings and present the ordinances on February 15.
Okay. There is nobody wishing to call those special? That's the order before, so if we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those will be continued till the 15th of February. Next items, please.
Next are items 8 through 14, and those are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 9, 10, and 14, the reports have been submitted for those items.
Okay. I'd like to move the communication from the Chair of Ad hoc Gangs on 14, please. Are there specials? Okay, Mr. Zine?
Mr. President.
Call that special. Are there specials?
I just need to hold item 9 on the desk till the motion, the amending motion gets circulated, that's all.
Okay, we'll hold 9 on the desk for Ms. Perry.
Do I need to sign it?
Yeah.
And on number 10, we have the Plum Report submitted. Mr. Reyes moves that Plum Report. And any... Okay, 9 has been circulated. Ms. Perry? Ms. Perry? Number 9 has been circulated. Ms. Perry? Number 9, the amendment has been circulated, so are you okay voting on it?
No. Mr. President, it's the report that will submit it.
Okay, sorry. Okay, any other specials? If not, let's take up the balance. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
The number 8 will carry over as an ordinance, because we do not have 12 members. The others are approved. Next items, please.
Next are items number 15 through 22, and those are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and, Mr. President, there are cards on 15 and 19.
Let's call those special for cards from the public. Any other specials, colleagues, on the balance, 16 through 22? Seeing no specials, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
If we can call the roll for the special meeting, please.
Alacon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call 23 or 24 special? Seeing none, open and close those public hearings, and if we can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Go back to the regular meeting, and we'll return to our presentations. And for our next presentation, I'd like to welcome our mayor forward with our council members from the 9th, 10th, and 8th districts for a special presentation. We also want to note, we are honored to have Congresswoman Diane Watson with us as well. Always an honor to have you here.
Yeah. Let's give a hand to the incredible Nigerian drum ensemble here with us once again, as we welcome everyone to an exciting opening of African-American Heritage Month, a month that gets better and better every year. Allow everyone to sit down for a moment and... And while I do, let me just say...
Allow everyone to sit down for a moment, and while I do, let me just say, Council President and members of the council, thank you for allowing us to once again come here to your chambers to celebrate the opening of African-American Heritage Month, as we do heritage months every year. Looking around, I know a lot of people here understand what I mean when I say we've come a long way in my lifetime. We've come a long way since 1968, when a man whose words and whose actions changed the lives of every American from Salma to Santa Monica, and yet was killed for having a vision. Come a long way when 40 years later, a black man of the 1960s has the voice to win over Iowa and be within the reach of the presidency. From the time when black history was a one-day lesson about history, to 2008, when it's a month-long celebration of our roots and our shared culture, we've come a long way. In Los Angeles, the idea that today we celebrate our shared culture could not be stronger. I was sharing with some of the honorees a few moments ago that it's a wonderful thing to see here every year when we celebrate African-American Heritage Month, Asian-American Heritage Month, Latino Heritage Month, and Native American Heritage Month. It's a splendor to see young people involved in the essay contest, from other cultures winning the essay contest, talking about, a Native American talking about an Asian-American culture, a Latino talking about African-American history and culture and contributions, whites winning the contest for Native American Heritage Month. It's a splendor to see, because here in Los Angeles, where our blood is African, Spanish, Native American, and European, this is a month about our collective heritage as a city. You've heard me say, and you've heard the Council President say many times, that LA was founded by 44 settlers, 26 of whom traced their heritage to Africa. The last, yeah, that's right. The last, the last governor of Mexican descent, Pio Pico, traced his heritage to Africa as well. And so when you think about that, when you think about the many communities that make up Los Angeles, today is a special day, because today we acknowledge a community, a culture, a people who have been in this city from its very beginning, who, on whose back this great nation was built, and I'm very proud to be here with all of you today. One Angelino who understands the roots of this city is none other than Bishop Charles Now, for decades, Bishop Blake has nourished the souls of the people of Los Angeles while also caring for their rights. In addition to the countless social programs he runs here in Los Angeles and across the country, the bishop has shown his leadership, providing for hundreds of thousands of African children. For his leadership, his undaunting willingness to take on challenges and social issues, he today embodies the spirit of Los Angeles. Now, I hear the spirit of public work has taken him out of Los Angeles today, so representing him here today, in addition to his son, a new father, Charles Blake III, is also with us, Dr. Lula Balton, a phenomenal leader in her own right. Why don't we, Charles, if you can come on this side, and, there we go. I had the honor, as you all know, in addition to the many years that Bishop Blake has been at West Angeles, he also, late, I believe in November, was elected the Presiding Bishop of his church, a church of some 6 million people. I had the honor to have him and his family over to my house at Getty, well, at Getty House, your house. And I won't forget, it's your house. But while I was paying rent, and we had him over to acknowledge his many years of work and this incredible accomplishment, and so on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, all of the members of the council who have signed this, we want to acknowledge Bishop Blake today.
Well, I greet you, I greet you on behalf of the Presiding Bishop of the Churches of God and Christ, Bishop Charles Blake. I think the mayor has said most of what could be said, other than, thank you so much, Los Angeles, thank you so much, the United States, for recognizing a man that is the product of America. We are honored, and I'm thrilled, as the CEO of the West Angeles CDC, to be able to be a part of the ceremony and accepting this honor for Bishop Blake. Charles Blake II will be concluding with words from Bishop, but I did want to say, on behalf of Bishop Blake, the mission of what we do in Los Angeles is to increase social and economic justice, to demonstrate compassion and alleviate poverty. We do those things as a tangible expression of God's kingdom, and we do it through the vehicle of community development at the Ministry of West Angeles Church. Thank you so much for this honor, Charles.
I don't know what more that I could say, other than what our illustrious mayor and Dr. Balton have said, but on behalf of Bishop Blake, who's now in St. Louis, being ordained as Presiding Bishop, we say, thank you. Thank you. We heard a song that, ones that said, "It never rains in Southern California." I think we know that today that is not true, but this is the best city in the country, the most diverse, and we have the best mayor. God bless you.
I just turned to my right and see that Congresswoman Diane Watson is here with us, let's give her a big hand. My great friend, former President of the School Board, State Assembly Member, State Senator, and now Member of the Congress, representing the great city of Los Angeles. Thank you so much for being here with us. And now for the Dream of Los Angeles. This year, we honor a woman who captures our ideals, shapes our dreams with her hands. She's a woman who is never afraid to tackle the big questions at the core of our identity. This year's Dream of Los Angeles honoree is Artis Lane. Artis, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, and I've had the honor to know you for some time now, and when you look at the Who's Who of her collection, and by the way, if you haven't been to CAM recently, her exhibit is on display at CAM, and I can tell you that it's a beautiful exhibit. Among her works are the collections of Bill Cosby, Oprah Winfrey, Cecily Tyson, former President, and Mrs. Bush, Sidney Poitier, and the list goes on and on and on. This is an artist extraordinaire, a great Angelino, and someone that we honor today as well.
My heart is so filled with love today. I was just made an American citizen about three weeks ago. My mother named me Artis, so I've just been obedient to that name. But I want to encourage all the parents here, as my mother did, to follow your gift, whatever it be, it's a God-given gift. My artwork expresses God's dominion over man. I express the spirituality in art. God created art, so let your children, if they're artists, don't discourage them, don't say, like my mother, you should study commercial art to make a living. In this day and age, fine art, and all the arts, dance, writing, acting, this is the Mecca for acting. It opens up your creative juices to respond to God, to that message that you're being given. I love LA, I will always love it. Come to my exhibition, 92 Pieces, at California African-American Museum, Charmaine Jefferson. I have a young collector here, Eric Desade. Young people collecting art, those who can, just enjoying that their eyes are open, their hearts are open to the visuals. It'll give strength in our schools. When you're interested in art, it increases your interest in mathematics, and history, and every other course. So let's do that, LA. It's the City of Angels.
Well, like the first two honorees, our next honoree needs no introduction. He may be best remembered as an African dictator, but I'll tell you, I've seen him in so many movies, and this is a man that has an incredible talent. His talent is only being seen by most of us, but I'll tell you, this is a man who will be around for a very, very long time. He's not only a great actor, he's also a great Angelino. He grew up here in the Los Angeles area, I believe, in Carson. Yes, South Central and Carson. For all of those who strive to make it in Hollywood, and to do it without compromising the quality of roles, he is a role model. And so today, we honor Forest Whitaker as the hope of Los Angeles for all our children. There are a lot of whereas's here, including the year he was born. Needless to say, he's a very young man, but what is particularly, I think, instructive is that this is a man who's won many awards, not just the Academy Award for Best Actor, but also he's received the N double A Image Award nomination for Outstanding Supporting Actor in a Motion Picture, the Academy Award for Best Actor, as I said, the Golden Globe for Best Actor, the Best Actor SAG, and BAFTA Awards. A man whose face we've seen many times on the big screen, but a man of big heart and a beautiful family as well. To you, the hope of Los Angeles.
I thank the mayor for his generous words, his beautiful heart, and to all of you. I think, just, I'll let me talk for a second, but I was raised here in Los Angeles, and when I grew up as a little kid, I really had no breadth of imagination that would bring me to the places that I am. The fact that I'm standing here before you is a miracle, and in a lot of different ways. And so for me, I feel very proud to accept this award, because that hope extends to the possibilities that we all have here in this city, in this country, in this state, in the world. And I thank you for giving me this moment. Thank you.
And now I'd like to ask Council Member Wesson to join me here. I know that Council Member Wesson has some words to say about our next honoree, Postmaster James Smith. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's a pleasure to see you. Congresswoman? Anyway, let me get, cut to the chase here. This, this man that I'm going to say a few words about, you know, I was given a script by staff that basically says that he was the 39th Postmaster for the City of Los Angeles, and he did this, and he did that. I'm not going to tell you that story. I'm going to tell you the story about my friend, the story of his life that he shared with me not too long ago. He was from the South, where he worked at a young age, earning 75 cent a day. Come here, James. Come on. In case, in case I, I want to make sure I'm accurate here, so you just nudge me if I'm, go off track. 75 cents a day. Stayed with his mother in a home that had an outhouse. He tells her one day that he just can't live like this, that he's got to take a gamble, he wants to make something of himself. So I think, was it Florida?
Yes.
Flor, from Florida, all of a sudden, he comes to Los Angeles. He wanted to find himself, but he was from Florida, so he didn't want to go anywhere that was cold. So that's why he, that's why he picked Los Angeles. He was 17 going on 18 years old. When, when he got here, he came and he stayed around the Central Avenue area. He developed a relationship with a restaurant around Central Avenue that would feed him for 99 cent a day, for 99 cent a day. He then started, he was doing odd jobs, he was looking for a real job, and he took a test with the Police Department, Fire Department, and the Post Office. He passed all of the tests, he got a 98 on the test for becoming a postal worker, and he, he accepted that job. Now, if you can live on 75 cent a day, this guy really didn't know what to do when he began to get his post office salary. So what he did, he saved almost every dime. In fact, he said that the banks used to call him and make him cash his checks, because every time he got paid, he would take his check and put it underneath the bed. Right, James? Right? Now, he made a promise to his mother that he was going to buy her a home, and, and he did, save enough money, and he bought her a home. Now, he had a friend that lived in a very nice area up on the hill, and this doctor was selling his home. And he says to James, who was a postman at that time, do you want to buy? do you want to buy my house? Now, James really couldn't afford it, but he said, I'll give it a go. And he got the house. He had this old raggedy car. And all of the neighbors would say, oh, do you have a friend that lives? He didn't even tell the neighbors that he was their neighbor. He never missed a day of work in forty-four years. In forty-four years, he was promoted seventeen times, with his last promotion being the Thirty-Ninth Postmaster for the great city of Los Angeles. He tells me that this is the only job that he ever had. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to present to a good man, a role model for all, that if you work hard, you have faith, you aim high, anything is possible. It's my pleasure to present to James Smith, our postmaster, a resolution signed by every elected official within the city government. Not bad for a guy from Florida that made seventy-five cent a day. What do you think?
And over to your left. Everyone this way, please.
Hey, this is like, I can relate to Britney Spears.
Just kidding. Just kidding.
No, I don't always, the way I think I get elected, because I don't always say what's politically correct. I say what's in my heart. And those of you...
And Britney's in his heart.
No, I don't think my wife would appreciate that. So no, dear, she's not, only you. But anyway, let's give Smitty another round of applause.
And now I'd like to bring up and invite Andrea Gibson to speak on behalf of the title sponsor of our month's events, the Walt Disney Company. And I'd like to say something, members, because I think it's important. Walt Disney, over the years, has invested a great deal of money and funds in these efforts to support African-American Heritage Month, Latino Heritage Month, Native American Heritage Month, and Asian-American Heritage Month. And as you know, a big part of this effort isn't just these opening ceremonies, but it's the education effort in the schools and in the communities. It's the celebration of culture and art that comes along with each of these. And this title sponsor has done an incredible job of supporting this effort at celebrating the shared culture and diversity of the City of Los Angeles. Andrea Gibson.
On behalf of the Walt Disney Company, we're thrilled to once again be the title sponsor for African-American Heritage Month and to celebrate the contributions that African-Americans continue to make in this great city of Los Angeles. Disney takes pride in diversity and is comprised of employees from all walks of life, from all over the world. Today's honorees, much like Dr. Carter G. Woodson, the father of Black History Month, continue to pave the way to keeping our dreams alive, challenging us to become better people. And we're very excited to join them. And they also teach us to strive for excellence and never give up on our dreams. So on behalf of Disney, we want to congratulate our honorees, and may you continue the good work you do for the betterment of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I'm now going to unveil the calendar. Every year, as you all know, we have a calendar to celebrate the month. It's a calendar of all of the activities that will take place during the month. And a local artist will help us unveil it, the artist who's rendering we've selected for 2008. Thank you. Are you the artist? The artist is with us today, Zil Harris. And... Charles? Okay. And so, one, two, three. Wow. Is that beautiful? In a library, that's good. Promoting our public libraries.
SO1 Bookstore.
Oh, it's a what?
SO1 Bookstore.
SO1 Bookstore. That's like a library.
As we're taking the photographs, I know there's a couple other councilmembers, too, that would like to add their good wishes and comments on the month. I'd like to first call on Councilwoman Jan Perry, followed by Councilmember Bernard Parks. Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I don't want to reiterate what everyone has said because obviously, we're celebrating a very rich history and contributions and arts, culture, and academic accomplishments. But I just want to reference two quotes from a female African-American role model of mine, Maya Angelou. And she said, "Prejudice is a burden that confuses the past, threatens the future, and renders the future inaccessible." And then as a follow-up, and this is why I have hope and optimism, when we cast our bread upon the waters, we can presume that someone downstream, whose face we will never know, will benefit from our action, as we, who are downstream from another, will profit from the grantor's gift. And I just want to recognize... Thank you. And I just want to recognize some of the folks who are here today from the Ninth District, and in my mind, they're celebrities. There's Bob Watt is here, just retired from the L.A. Philharmonic, one of the three African-American French horn players in the entire country at this time, only three. And of course, my good friend and retired Marine and head of his neighborhood council, Can Do from the Van Meter Center, the historic Van Meter Center, Joe Turner, back there. Jeffrey Winston, who is a longtime activist and leader and one who cares for our mothers and fathers, Jeffrey Winston from Angeles Plaza. I know he's in here somewhere. And of course, my favorite judge is here, too, Judge Maybelline. And I don't want to offend anybody, so forgive me if I didn't remember everyone. But just a special note, I see that he was able to work himself from the B-list up to the A-list this year. And he's everybody's friend, Willis Edwards. Where are you, Willis? Yes, yes. All right. Oh, Bubba Jackson. I know Bubba Jackson, who is the visionary behind the Central Avenue Jazz Festival, along with Jose Rios. Bubba's in here somewhere.
Behind us, over here.
Okay, he's way over here, buried in the... Hello, Bubba, how are you? Anyway, just want to recognize folks on the Ninth District. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We call on Mr. Parks, and then we'll go to Mr. Delgado right after, and a couple other councilmembers. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to just say to the mayor, thank you for bringing an all-star cast to the city council. We thought last year you outdid yourself with Stevie Wonder. You exceeded that. And we just want to say thank you because you've made Black History Month a priority in your administration, and we're very appreciative. I just want to say to Bishop Blake and Ms. Ballton is that many people know that the bishop is out saving souls, but they forget about what he's doing in economic development. And when you look at what's happening with senior housing, looking at market rate housing, looking at how they're going to redevelop Jefferson Boulevard, it's going to be a remarkable change on Crenshaw Boulevard. And so we want to thank you for that. And also Artist Lane, a true professional. You do have to go and see her display at the African-American Museum. Not only is she a charming lady, she is a true artist. And I think they named you appropriately. The other thing is, Mr. Whitaker, really glad to see you here as an artist and really brought up in the sense of so many actors have toiled in the field and not had an opportunity to reach that plateau of Oscars and such. And each one of them relived that as you and others have been able to walk across that stage and get that gold statue. And then I just would like to, so I can go home this evening and introduce the rigolets, and my wife are here today as part of Black History Month, and ask them to stand. The rigolets. And that's what we honored them earlier last year as part of one of our top social clubs in the City of Los Angeles. And Disney, thank you for not only Black History Month, but Asian-Pacific Islander Month, Hispanic Month, and that contribution you just gave to the city. We are very appreciative of it.
Thank you. I know City Attorney Rocky Delgado needs to...
You know, I've often said that this is an incredibly diverse city, probably the most diverse city in human history. But it is that diversity that unites us rather than dividing us, like no other city on the planet. And I think our honorees today, and I congratulate the mayor again for picking the honorees, our honorees today embrace that in every sense of the word. Certainly Bishop Blake, and I'm glad that Dr. Ballton is here today to accept on his behalf because it wasn't just about the pulpit for him. It was always about being in the community and allowing the community to rise up. And that was spirituality for our city. And that's been great. Artist Lane, first of all, I got to say, that's a really cool name. Artist Lane, so congratulations to your mom on that. Also, as she pointed out, she just became a new citizen, so she can vote, and so she's my best friend. But also, she demonstrates to all of us with her art and with her presence what grace is all about. Forrest Whitaker, extraordinary artist. His performances show us that it's not only okay to have a conscience, but it's required. And of course, James Smith demonstrates to all of us that perseverance, hard work, has great meaning. So it's a proud moment for me to be here today with our mayor and the rest of the city council members to congratulate our city as we unite and come together in celebrating African-American History Month. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes is our next speaker.
Thank you, Council President. I stand to first thank the mayor for having assembled such great inspirations for our community. But last night, I was at a graduation in the adult school system, Unified School District. Over a thousand students, most of them students of color, African-Americans, Latinos. These were dropouts. These are youngsters that left high school for one reason or another, each having a hardship story as to why they couldn't finish. But they've attained their credentials, their high school diploma. So when I hear these stories, what you have to offer and share with our youth, it makes a difference because you allow them to dream, because you fulfill your dreams. So I thank you for having that inspiration for our youth. And I thank those who put this together because God knows our youth need that support. So thank you very much. Thank you for your dreams and for allowing the youth to continue pushing forward because you've made it. Thank you so much.
Mr. Alacon?
Yeah, as a representative of the Northeast San Fernando Valley, where ten percent of my district is African-American, I feel I have to stand up and say, hey, the San Fernando Valley has a huge representation of African-Americans. There was a study at Cal State Northridge about a decade ago that indicated that people had moved from concentrations in Coima to every, essentially, one African-American family on every block in the San Fernando Valley. So the recognition for the African-American heritage of Los Angeles is greatly needed in the San Fernando Valley as well. I also want to mention that we just did a Martin Luther King Day celebration. Five hundred people showed up to that breakfast, and the mayor attended. We want to thank you for being there. The NAACP has grown from forty to four hundred just in the last two years. So there's a resurgence of activism in a community that was, in many ways, recognized for only things like the Rodney King Incident. Many other things are happening in the Northeast San Fernando Valley. Finally, Mr. Mayor, I mentioned to Mr. Whitaker that with all the strikes and all the awards celebrations being canceled, that this just may be the most coveted award in Hollywood. And we were happy that he was the first recipient this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weston.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I just rise because, of course, I want to thank the mayor and thank the honorees. But I think it's also important that we acknowledge... Where's the study club, people? Raise your hand. Authors, our Authors Study Club.
Yeah, if they could all stand up.
Come on, stand up. And Dr. Shepherd, our Authors Study Club. They, you know, they were formed or had a chapter here in 1945, and they've done everything that they could every African-American History Month to make sure that we focus on it. They come up with a great theme, and I just think we should afford them, not afford them, we should give them another round of applause.
Mr. Labange?
Thank you for your leadership and always coming and hearing. Good to see the guy from Franklin High behind you, our city attorney, Roosevelt, and then Franklin, then Marshall Palisades. Congratulations to all the awardees, which is so important. But the man I really want to congratulate and all the men and women of the agency that he serves is our postmaster, James Smith. Give Sam up again, James. Here it's raining and flooding. And I've been to that post office in New York City that neither rain nor sleet nor snow will keep us from doing our appointed rounds. And the post office in the United States does the greatest job, I think, of any government agency. And I just wanted to thank you for what you're doing. And also, Ms. Smith, my postmaster from 90039. I think I saw her earlier here. And wherever she is, you say hello to her for me. Thank you. All the postal employees, stand up. Give them a big hand right there. How many postmasters in the country? There's very few postmasters, like federal judges. There's 573 federal judges. There's maybe only a thousand postmasters. Another hand for James Smith.
Ms. Gruehl?
Thank you. And I want to congratulate all of our honorees today, Bishop Blake, Forrest Whitaker, and Artist Lane, and of course, James Smith, who we met up in the City Hall Tower when you were just appointed, and the exciting things that you had planned for being here. But I think, you know, you all unveiled that wonderful poster. But the best thing, which I'm not sure everyone has shown yet, is this wonderful calendar of events. And when you look through this, it is amazing that this city of Los Angeles recognizes, as Artis talked about, the importance of art and music, and African art and music. And how many different programs... how many different programs, and I want to thank Cultural Affairs for putting this together, because no matter where you live in the city of Los Angeles, you can recognize, you know, African-American Heritage Month, but you can also learn about the culture and the music and the art throughout the city of Los Angeles. So I know we have this everywhere, so I'll make the big plug for people to get this wonderful calendar for that. So for Olga, thank you very much for all that you have done, and mayor and city attorney for all that you've done for this as well. We look forward to a very active month here in the city of Los Angeles to recognize the African-American heritage and the diversity of our city, which is so extraordinary and something that we all value very much. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. And I want to thank all the members and the mayor for gracing us with his presence, for Bishop Blake, for all he has done for our soul, for Artist Lane, what you've done for our spirit. Forrest Whitaker, you have been an inspiration to us all, and thank you for your friendship and your activism as well. And James Smith, you get it done. You have shown us. All those other folks, you are great, great people. But James Smith, let me tell you, we know that if the post doesn't get there, especially for all of us who have ever run an election campaign, that's the most important man to know because occasionally, things don't get delivered, and we make sure that they do and that democracy can function and flourish. So God bless you for all you've done. But the incredible assemblage of awardees today. You blessed us with your presence in these chambers, and we collectively, as the city council, thank you for making this city such a beautiful place. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you. And with that, we thank you, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations again to our awardees. Round of applause for all of them. We'll next recognize from the 2nd Council District, Ms. Gruel. On the way there, I'd like to make a special recognition as well of Carlos Gonzalez Gutierrez, who is currently the Executive Director of the Institute for Mexicans Abroad at the Mexico's Ministry of Foreign Affairs. And as a member of the Mexican Foreign Service since 1987, he has been consul for Community Affairs at the Mexican consulate in Los Angeles from 1989 to 1995. He's the Director of Community Affairs at the Program for Mexican Communities Abroad from 1995 to 1999, and Counsel for Latino Affairs at the Embassy of Mexico to the United States of America from 1999 to 2003. He's an author, he is an extremely well-educated man, and most importantly, shh, folks, he is a friend of Los Angeles. And I want to thank Carlos Gonzalez Gutierrez, un gran amigo de Los Angeles, por su presencia. Thank you for your presence here, and let's give him a round of applause as well. And with that, we'd like to recognize Ms. Gruel.
Thank you very much. I think we're about ready. I'm going to ask my other Bruin friend, Mr. Reyes, to join me. But if we could have all the people from the UCLA School Management Program? Nice to see you. You're just fine. Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I'd ask that all of you join me today in congratulating the UCLA School Management Program in celebrating their 15th anniversary. I'm proud to be joined by Dan Chernow, the Executive Director, and is Jeff Seymour here too? No, did he? Jeff couldn't be here, but is chairperson, I think, of the Program Steering Committee. And I'd also, I know we have many of the program leaders that are here and recognize them for their outstanding work as part of this reform effort. The School Management Program is a phenomenal program that has helped improve over 800 schools and school districts throughout the region over the past 15 years. The staff of this program consists of practitioners, not professors. They are teachers and educators that have real-life experience in the schools. They demonstrate true dedication to growing and improving our public education system with the sun starting kindergarten next year. You know, we need all the help we can get there. They are on call seven days a week, 24 hours a day, and always offer their support. Is that true? Yes, that's true. They build relationships with these schools and often continue the work with the schools over many years to ensure that the educational improvements actually happen. I have so much admiration for these professionals. They are making a real difference in fundamentally changing how we approach education in public schools. They combine theory and practice to improve the school environment. These teachers get to the root of many of the issues that our schools face. They provide training and development for teachers, they build community, and they have true, you know, create a true transformation in the schools they work with. The program is led by Dan Chernow, who I've known for, I don't want to know how long I tell everyone, who has a background of business in education. He courageously moved from a career in the business sector to develop this nonprofit. He has served on the California State Board of Education and the State Curriculum Committee. And so there is a long resolution here that thanks them for their work in improving our schools. And we know that as you look at the future of the city, there's nothing more important than providing education to our children. There's nothing more important than ensuring our teachers have the training that is necessary to do that. And there's nothing more important than making it a team effort. We cannot abandon our schools by saying it's someone else's problem. It's all of our problems. And to be able to reach to those young people who see today, as we talked about African, you know, Heritage Month, role models of people, individuals who have succeeded in life, those of us that are Bruins who have succeeded in life and ultimately became a council member, which I think is a very good profession here in the city of Los Angeles. But it is, it's my pleasure, first I'll introduce Ed Reyes to say a few words, and then we will present this to you, Dan Chernow.
Thank you, Wendy, and in all honesty, thank you for inviting me to share this podium with you. I'm always proud to say I went to UCLA. But it's very, very inspiring to see how this discipline that they're administering in investing our youth is in such a critical time. Everything we do today for our children, their schooling, their discipline in learning math, English, basic skills, just to graduate, will make this country stronger 10, 15, 20 years from now. In the global economy, other countries get it. 15 years ago, China and India were moving in a direction where they were graduating their engineers, they were graduating their mathematicians, they were graduating their technicians. Today, we have a dropout rate of close to 40% in high school. This effort by UCLA School of Management is making a difference because they're penetrating this issue and creating solutions at a very fundamental level. We will see the fruits of it five, 10 years from now because of the difference in graduation, and it'll be because Bruins got together, UCLA was able to assert itself and get to the core of the issue in all these schools. So thank you very much, Wendy, for your leadership in bringing this forward. Thank you, all of you. You're the unsung heroes for the future of this country. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And so on behalf of the entire city council and all the elected officials, actually, in the city of Los Angeles, we are proud to present this certificate resolution to UCLA School Management Program and all of the things that they've done for the city and all that we hope you will do in the future for our young people. So I'd ask that you give them a great round of applause as we present this certificate to Dan Chernow, the Executive Director of the School Management Project, Program, excuse me.
Thank you. Thank you.
Wendy, Ed, members of the council, thank you very, very much for this recognition. I must say that behind me are members of the School Management Program who could be here today, and I'd like to recognize them and have you thank them for all their hard work as well. I also want to point out that they represent all the great educational institutions of Los Angeles. We are an equal opportunity employer, not just from UCLA. We find the best and the brightest wherever we can find them. And for 15 years, it has been our passion as an organization to support schools who are struggling to ensure that every child have an opportunity for a high-quality education. And we'll be continuing to do this for the next 15 years at least. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Will you just take a picture here because it's so crowded? Can I have one of you go real quick right here? It's crowded in the back, we'll never make it up there.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. Our next presentation is from council member from our 10th Council District, Herb Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. Let's give the councilman from the 10th District, Herb Wesson, a round of applause. Today, today for me is a great honor. Today is Mayor Day for me. I have an opportunity to stand with two mayors, both of which are my friends. So at this point in time, I'd like to call a great mayor from the city of Los Angeles, from a great family, and that's Jimmy Hahn. Please come forward. Let's give Mayor Hahn. It was an honor that the mayor's sister, Janice, asked me if I would pinch-hit for her today in a presentation to Project Gangs, an organization that has been around for a while, an organization that has done a lot to help the young people in our city and county of Los Angeles. So I'd like to ask Mr. Bay, is Harry Bay, please come forward. Yeah, who represents? Anyway, Harry Bay, and I'll let the mayor say a few things, and again, Janice gave me some notes, but I won't refer to those notes. I know that Harry has been involved in trying to turn young people around his entire life. I first met Harry 21 years ago in this building when I was chief deputy to then-Los Angeles City Councilman Nate Holden. And I'll be honest with you, Harry would drive me insane. He would be at my office every week with some idea, some scheme, some way to make a young person's life better. And when you think, when I think about Harry, he never says never. At that point in time, Harry had written and produced a play about the South that he felt would make young people come together. And somehow, he cobbled up enough money to produce this play. He invited me, I was able to come, and it was about hatred, and it was about how people realize that they have more in common that separates them, and I really enjoyed the play. The only thing that was kind of amiss, the lead character in this play was a sheriff or a police chief. The regular actor who played this role was sick, so that when I came to see the play, Harry had to play the part of the actor. Other than Harry's acting, I thought it was a phenomenal play. Anyway, he's a good man, his heart is in the right place, he is loyal as the day is long. I know he's been, he's been my friend for 21 years, and when I need him, I don't even have to call. Somehow, he just shows up whenever I need him. So with that said, I'm going to ask our great mayor to say a few words about this dedicated man, and I won't even go into the things that he's tried to do to help our young men and women who are in armed services. But with that, I'd like to have Mayor Hahn say a few words.
Thank you, Councilman Wesson. Mr. President, members of the council, it's my honor to come here today to honor Harry Bay, 40 years of Project Gangs, which was started really to bring young people the chance to see a vision that there is a different way. And that play that began Project Gangs, getting young people involved in all this, led Harry Bay to be involved in so many aspects of our community, always trying to help people. Harry Bay is a great American. He has a great heart, and he's done great things with people and a lot of young people that other people would have given up on. Harry Bay never gives up, and he always believes that everybody is a child of God, and he looks to find that goodness in everybody. A lot of us would say, Harry, that's too hard. You're not going to find any good in this gang member, you're not going to find any good in this criminal. But Harry can show so many people that there is something inside them that can come from within, but really comes from above, that they can tap into and make a difference in their lives. I've enjoyed working with him. I know that when my father was a county supervisor, he enjoyed working with you and honored you for the work you did in the county of Los Angeles. And I think it's altogether fitting and proper that the city of Los Angeles honor you today as well, Harry.
So with that said, Barry, I'd like to present you with two commendations from the city of Los Angeles, one for the great organization Project Gangs, and the other for you. In all the years that I've known Harry, he's always asked for something, but he's never asked for something for himself, not once. It's always for someone else. Harry, this is the least we can do for you.
And Mr. Wesson, before you leave, Mr. Reyes wanted to make an additional comment.
Thank you, Madam President. This gentleman I would run into in the mid-'90s, when we're doing the Housing Committee work under then-councilman Hernandez, we were working on the allocation of resources to block grants. I've seen his work throughout the years. So it's great to see you here. What I'm learning today about you I was not aware of, and to hear our mayor Hahn speak to you in reference to his dad as well, really is a tribute to your commitment, a lifelong commitment. And for that, I thank you. But I also want to take a moment to thank Mayor Hahn for all his work, because back when I became councilman, we started working on these gang issues. It's good to see how we've been able to deliver and continue on the great work you started, Mayor Hahn. Thank you so much. Thank you, sir.
Well, as with all due respect to all the major religious beliefs, to the believers as well as the non-believers, that I, as a Christian, owe all the praise, all the honor, and all the glory to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. First of all, I'd like to say to Jim Hahn, the number-one person other than my mother and family who helped me in the county and city the most through up and down, thick and thin, because I'm a very strong personality, was your father. And he always would say, Harry, 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 I know you're a Republican, but Harry, your whole family is a Democrat. You truly have the heart of a Democrat. And Kenneth Hahn was one, to me, was the most positive role model in the county, and he always stood by me through thick and thin, up and down, in and out. And I, you know, there's not enough kind words I can say about him because if it wasn't for him, Jim, I would not be here today. And then to come to Mayor Hahn, really, he's one of the finest mayors the city's ever had. His doors were always open. When he did his gang injunctions, most people didn't know he worked around the clock. When he did the things on the counterterrorism, he worked around the clock. And he's made so many sacrifices for this city, and I'm proud and privileged to have him as a friend. When I come to Herb Wesson, actually, it's not 21 years, Herb, it's 23 years, because I remember when he was out on the streets campaigning for Nate Holden beforehand, before the city council. But I'm proud to see that he's come up over the years, and I always told him then, you'll be a great statesman someday, and sure enough, it came to pass. And then when I think of Ed Reyes and his district, the wonderful work he does in Pico Union over there and up in Highland Park and Glassell Park area, he's done wonderful things over there, and I'm glad I've been able to help with parades and stuff like that. And I'm glad to have you as a friend, and there's a few other districts here, but the people on him. But I've served in all 15 city council districts and all five supervisor districts, LA County. And now, I'd like to bring up the Project Gangs people, who I've known five to 25 years, Pastor Walker, are you present, Detroit Flanagan? Wasn't for them, I would not be here today at all. These are the volunteers in the streets, in the community, and two of them in Bernard Parks District, these two right here. But wasn't for these men, I would not be here today. Ito, who's Manuel Flores, who's a Desert Storm survivor Marine, and he came back in one piece. And I want to thank him for being here today because he served his country honorably, and he's been at the VA, and he's gone through a lot, and I just want to support him. Dennis Quater from Let's Talk Recovery, he's here, and then Joey Butterfuko, that's going to be our radio show, Harry Bay USA, it's going to go to over 100 stations. I have Jackie from Watts down here, and I have Bob Campbell, and I have, I have...
Ask them all to stand up, Harry.
Come on, all of you, stand up.
Just stand up.
Come on up over here.
Everybody stand up, or they just stand up there.
Yeah, stand up right there. Without these people, I could not be where I am today, none of them. They've all been a help and an asset to Project Gangs over the years to make our community safe and a safer place to live in. And I'm just saying, you haven't heard that last to me, Harry Bay USA will be back. We have a radio show, and it is going to go national, and it's going to be a very controversial show, so...
With you, I'm sure.
Yeah, and I'm looking forward to having some of you on that show. Thank you all. Oh, Eric Garcetti, oh, yeah, I feel so bad. There's so many of you here, I get it. Eric Garcetti, the Hollywood district.
Thank you for everything, Eric.
I mean, really...
Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I can't see anyone, but I've been in every one of them. Thank you all. And Mike Hernandez...
And thank you, Mr. Weston.
Former Councilman Mike Hernandez. I mean, when Mike was councilman, I want to thank him for all the work he did, helped us in the Pico Union area also. I want to thank you, and it's good to have you as a friend also.
Don't forget you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weston. That was a great presentation.
Madam President...
For Ms. Hahn.
Mr. President, I think we have a great performer that's here with us today, and for whatever reason, we didn't mention him. All you have to do is look at his face, and you know him. Everybody give a hand to Eric LaSalle. We know him as a great, passionate doctor on the series, but my favorite was Coming to America when you had the Jerry curl. Anyway, I just want everybody to acknowledge Mr. LaSalle. Well, he did was a movie. It was a good movie. It was a good one. But anyway, everybody, Mr. Eric LaSalle.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weston. And Mr. Weston will be playing in this room all week, next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, third floor. Thank you, Mr. Weston. Mr. Garcetti, our council president is next.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you to all the folks that are here in council chambers for their patience and also for our viewers. It's been a very, very exciting morning with some incredible people in these chambers. But I wanted to honor today a local student who has done an incredible job and been recognized with one of the highest honors in this country. Reed Doucette has been named this year as a Rhodes Scholar for his achievements as a student, a community activist, and athlete of the highest distinction at the, and you can clap anyways, Mr. Reyes, University of Southern California here in Los Angeles. Let's give him a round of applause for that accomplishment. Reed is a senior who will graduate this spring with an undergraduate degree in mechanical engineering from the USC Viterbi School of Engineering with a minor in business from the USC Marshall School of Business. He played for four years as a forward in the basketball team of USC. He's a fifth-year senior this year, so he can't play, but had four great years as a Trojan and still follows his teammates very closely and travels with them whenever he can. He's conducted research on nanoporous metal foams, which I know we're all familiar with, at the Lawrence Livermore National Laboratory in Livermore, California, work that actually may have important applications in improving catalytic converters and medicine delivery devices. He's also conducted research at USC on solar cells and related renewable energy projects as well. He's a co-founder and remains a senior advisor to Los Angeles Community Impact, a USC student organization that provides free business consulting services to nonprofit organizations and small businesses throughout the city that I know Ms. Perry and Mr. Parks are familiar with, how many nonprofits around the USC community have emerged and how important that work is. He is USC's ninth Rhodes Scholar and its fourth scholar-athlete to receive this honor. So today, we congratulate this California native from Lodi, and he is here, and we celebrate with him the achievements that he has made as a scholar, as a researcher, as an athlete, as a community activist, and we express appreciation for his dedication and his service to this city and its residents. We extend best wishes to him as he pursues an advanced degree in engineering science at Oxford University, and we order this weather up to get him ready for England. So please join me in congratulating Reed Doucette.
I just want to say thank you so much to Councilman Garcetti. It's been a real treat to see everything here that's going on today. And I just want to say thank you also to USC and the city of Los Angeles. It's a tremendous honor to represent them through this whole process, and I'm looking forward to doing it and proud. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, and then Mr. Parks. Remember that even in your sleep. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to congratulate Reed...
Hold on one second. Mr. Parks?
Thank you. I just want to congratulate Reed as a USC graduate, going to further his education. And for those who believe that USC is just an athletic factory, it's clear that it's not, is that it's been deemed the number-one university a couple of years ago, and we're not talking football, but just the overall school. And going and having a Rhodes Scholar, going to study for three years out of the country and coming back to continue your studies as an engineer, we can expect great things from you. And in your spare time, you play basketball. And so it's a true indication of what student athletics means to USC, and I just wanted to congratulate you, wish you the best, and look forward to your return and making an impact on the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Our UCLA graduate has ceded his position, and I would like to just add, Mr. Reyes, would you like to reconsider?
I did not want to ruin the moment, but I do want to congratulate you.
Thanks.
I had the opportunity to speak with the Social Policy School, and what struck me was the diversity in the student population. So I commend USC for having that ability to recognize the international nature, not only of our city, but our communities. And the fact that you're working in the Pico Union and all the other areas around the school speaks a lot about the spirit you have. So as an individual who happens to go to USC, I congratulate you and wish you good luck.
Thank you. A very gracious Bruin. Nothing more needs to be said other than Reed Doucette, congratulations from the University of Southern California. What more can we expect? Thank you.
She's also a guy, too. Hang out here for one second. Take a picture. You do one out of the presentation, but don't forget you. Mr. Zein, I think is going to...
I believe, you have another presentation, Mr.?
Yeah, one more presentation, and I believe Mr. Zein is going to join me as well. Is that right? Is Mr. Zein joining me, too? Oh, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Zein's not. Okay. Colleagues, I'm pleased to be here today to announce and to present the very patient four-star award winners with the four-star awards to two WorkSource Career Centers and two OneSource Youth Opportunity Centers for their outstanding performance during the 2006-07 program year. Now, for the uninitiated out there who say, "What exactly is a WorkSource Center? What is a Youth Opportunity Center?" These are places where Angelinos go for jobs. These are the folks who help people ensure that they will have employment, that they can support themselves, their families, and contribute to Los Angeles. The 18 WorkSource Centers provide job search, training, and employment-related services to both adults and young people, as well as workers who have been laid off and need to recalibrate their careers. Equally importantly, these centers provide support to businesses and to employers in our region. One of the reasons that workforce training dollars, at least until the last seven years, have had such bipartisan support is because both Republicans, Democrats, independents, business, and workers have recognized how important it is and how businesses and workers gain from making sure that we have strong WorkSource Centers. And make sure that you say that loud and clear to all of our leaders in all parties in Washington, because we need those dollars that have been so drastically cut back here in LA. Last year, these centers, with less money than before, served over 131 job seekers and 1,100 businesses. The 13 OneSource Youth Opportunity Centers provide school-to-career services, and last year, the OneSource network served nearly 13,000 youth. Bottom line... Is that right?
130,000.
100, there's a zero off of that. 130,000 youth. Excuse me, thank you. Good catch, Mr. Benbo. Bottom line, these centers help a lot of Los Angeles residents find jobs and provide skills training to build careers and get back in the workforce after layoffs. The centers help our youth stay in school, prepare them for work, and offer employment and summer job opportunities. I was proud to be part of the opening of the center at Los Angeles Community College Campus, Los Angeles City College, excuse me. And while I was there, I heard a young man, as I was going back to my car, coincidentally after the opening ceremonies, and I was getting to my car right next to where the WorkSource Center was, and this guy ran up to an employee and said, "I got the job! I got the job!" There are no sweeter four words. And the folks before you today are the hard-working people who make those sorts of dreams come through every single day throughout our neighborhood. So congratulations. These centers are formally evaluated using a four-star point system, with four stars being the highest level of achievement, surpassing contractual goals set by the WIB, Workforce Investment Board, and the Community Development Department. Two WorkSource Centers and two OneSource Centers achieved four stars this year. Those organizations are the Wilshire Metro WorkSource Center, which is operated by Community Career Development, Inc. Gloria Moore is here, and it's located in Council District 10, in Councilmember Weston's district, who I know has done an extraordinary job, too, as our chair of Housing, Community, and Economic Development, to ensure that our workforce dollars are spent the right way. So let's congratulate first Wilshire Metro WorkSource Center. Next, we have the Harbor WorkSource Center, which is operated by Carson-Lamita Torrance and administering agency for Carson-Lamita Torrance Workforce Investment Network, located in the great 15th Council District. Congratulations to the Harbor WorkSource Center as well. Nice to see you. Keep winning, you know? Do this one. Do this one. Council District 3.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. North Valley OneSource Center in my district, Council District 3, North Valley OneSource Center.
Four stars.
Four stars for District 3. One second. And you said Republicans and Democrats.
Absolutely.
When you heard Republican, I heard Republican, that's why I ran up here.
That's right.
There's only a couple in the House. District 3. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Get a picture right here. Okay, that's this one, here's one. That is Council District 6, South Valley OneSource Center, both operated in 3 and 6 by El Proyecto del Barrio. Corinne Sanchez is with us as well, our extraordinary executive director, who has done such an amazing job in the San Fernando Valley. And the city council, Mayor Vera Goza, clearly recognize that a strong workforce is an essential foundation to a strong economy and a just society. So I'm happy to recognize our highest-performing centers. They open the doors to opportunity here in Los Angeles, and you are invited to join the Workforce Investment Board when it recognizes these centers at its quarterly meeting on January 30, 9 to 11 a.m. at the Community Development Department. Speaking of which, I think we have a moment, and we'd love to hear from Richard Benbo, who is our general manager of the Community Development Department, to say a few words, too. Mr. Benbo.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President, and greetings, council members. My words will be brief. I just wanted to say that the people you're looking at now are the backbone to the city's workforce development effort, and they do a tremendous job. They do it under the fine leadership of the WIB and their executive director, Greg Irish, as well as the support of the council members and the community. So we're just proud to be here this morning and be able to share with you this very, very momentous occasion. So thank you very much.
And Corinne Sanchez, the executive director of Proyecto del Barrio.
Corinne, I'm Jennifer Rodriguez, I'm the executive VP for El Proyecto del Barrio. Corinne had to go to another meeting, but I just want to say, on behalf of El Proyecto, I just want to thank, really thank you, all of you, for helping us one more time to come back as a four-star. These are six years, and I wanted to really congratulate our staff that is behind all of us here. So congratulations to the staff of the youth of El Proyecto del Barrio. Thank you.
And we want to give special recognition as well to a special employer who is here.
Good morning, and thank all of you for recognizing the achievements of our WorkSource Centers. WorkSource Centers could not be successful without the support of the employer community. And I'd like to take this time to acknowledge our employer, Metro. Metro has hired almost 200 of the graduates from our training program. Those graduates are earning $13.86 an hour. Metro has also contributed $75,000 in cash towards our training program. And I'd just like to thank Donott and Metro for their support of our WorkSource training program.
Go Metro!
I can't help but notice that every time anybody refers to this city, they have the words "the great" in front of it. I'm Paul Nawatka, City Councilman for the great city of Torrance, and representing Torrance, Lamita, and Carson. We have put together a consortium that included, through Janice Hahn's work, the city of Los Angeles, and we're proud to have served thousands, thousands of people who are underemployed or unemployed and helped them get jobs. We recently have joined with Long Beach and continue to provide those services. We thank you very much for this award. We promise to do this every year.
Go Torrance! Thank you very much, Madam President. We appreciate the time.
Before you end, Mr. Reyes, did you want to speak...
Get the photographs, so...
Mr. Reyes wanted to just say something as you were walking.
Yes, before you leave, I know I've been talking all morning, but it's been such a tremendous set of presentations, because it's all connected about the wealth and the health of the city. I'm working hard with the leadership of the city to figure out how we can get our own city family to support you, how we get the harbor, the airport, all the different economic generators to actually be part of your world, so we can keep up the type of sustenance that our youth need and those who need jobs. I think you're the key linchpin in this. I think you play a critical role. I would hope all the departments could recognize that. Many of them have attitudes that, "Well, Councilman, what you want to do is basically babysitting." We don't babysit. This is our job. That's not our job. So don't you understand we have WorkSource Centers that make it their goal to do what you should be doing? Take advantage of them, support them, fund them, make them a critical part of your budget, and this city will change. So thank you for that. Continue with the hard work.
Thank you very much. Next presentation, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's been a wonderful morning, a very historic morning, with a lot of celebrities, with a lot of community leaders, with a lot of significant discussions, not only about African-American History Month, but about people who make a contribution to making the world a better place. And as an elected official, we all know, colleagues around this horseshoe, that we're only as good as our staff. You know, we might be able to set the tone, but we don't have the time or the energy to do all the follow-through. And we all know the devil's in the details, and we know that talk is cheap and actions speak louder than words. Well, in my district, the 11th District, we have an extremely involved constituency. As we all know, we have four jobs as the council members. One is a policymaker. We sit on committees, and we sit on the council and make laws. We have three other jobs. Our second job is constituent services, being the link between the bureaucracy and our constituents. The third is land use issues, and the fourth is accessibility. We're not in Washington or Sacramento. We're in the community. Well, I have been very successful in Brentwood and in the Canyons and in the Palisades. I've been very successful because I have had a field deputy that knows how to follow-through. I have a field deputy that knows how to get all parties together, even when they haven't historically been together. Mandeville Canyon is an example. For 22 years, Marvin Browdy, Cyndemus Sikowski, were dealing with three homeowner groups that could not get on the same wavelength to deal with a left-hand turn signal, how the opening of the canyon looks, stop signs are... the opening of the canyon looks, stop signs or humps or bumps. Well, my deputy, Andrea Epstein, got those groups together, worked tirelessly with them, and we cut a ribbon the other day. And you know what we did? We gave out 22 certificates to the departments in the city that were involved in making it happen. Andrea knows how to get the bureaucrats and the constituents together and get those services done. She's been an incredible asset to this great city. Andrea, like my other young folks, like we saw Sophia Jones, who was an incredible press deputy, move on to other opportunities. You can't hold them down, and you shouldn't hold them down. You provide an opportunity to mentor, you provide an opportunity for them to learn, and most importantly, they carry out our mandates. This comes from the heart. I don't need to read a certificate that tells you how great she is. I can tell you how great she is. So this is a moment that we want to share with you all about Andrea Epstein, the greatest deputy I've had in the 11th District, who's moving on to other assignments. Andrea Epstein, say a few words. Pleasure. And as you can see, standing behind is the rest of my backup team that makes things work. Andrea.
Well, first, I want to thank Councilman Rosendahl. I've had an amazing experience and appreciate the opportunity. Second, the entire CD 11 staff, without their support, I couldn't have gotten anything done. And last, to the multiple people I've worked with at all the city departments, for their support to help get projects done as well. Thank you.
Pleasure, Andrea. Pleasure. Certificate for you.
Thank you.
And we're going to go in the back and take some photos.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. It's now time for comments from the public. We'll open public comment. First speaker will be from the San Fernando Valley, if we're ready in the valley. Bruce Darian, Mr. Darian?
Good morning, City Council. I'd like to respond. I spoke last Wednesday, and the Assistant City Attorney was questioning the connection of city business to the Malibu Pier. So I think it's a good opportunity now to follow up on that and show some connections to city business, the city's jurisdiction, and how that relates to the Malibu Pier and what's encompassed with the building of the pier and also the environmental issues that surround the pier. Jurisdiction battles go all the way up to the Supreme Court, so it's difficult for the city to make instant decisions on jurisdiction issues while they're listening to people speak. So I'd appreciate it if the city would be more careful in making abrupt decisions in that regard. I'll focus on one issue here, and that's Malibu Canyon. It is what's considered a major discharger under the Clean Water Act or the EPA, which issues permits to dischargers. And the Las Virginas Metropolitan Water District, Triunfo Water District, is a major discharger to Malibu Canyon. Now, for many years now, since 1984, they've been discharging to Malibu Creek. They have been granted a right to switch that discharge to Malibu Canyon to Calabasas Creek, which then drains down into the Los Angeles River. I don't think there's any dispute whatsoever that the Los Angeles River is city business. What's at issue here and being battled out into the court as we speak is jurisdiction on bringing a citizen suit over environmental issues, which affect the Los Angeles River. The positive treated affluent, which comes from Tapia or the Triunfo facility in Malibu Canyon, drains to the Los Angeles River. It's combined with the affluent that comes out of the Tillman Reclamation Facility in Van Nuys. That then drains down to San Pedro, where it meets the ocean. So Los Angeles River is a direct tributary to the Pacific Ocean. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Councilmembers. Thank you very much. I'd like to comment on something that occurred last meeting, I believe a violation of the Brown Act. When you introduce amendments to items that have already been heard in committee hearings, and you introduce amendments on the council floor, the public should have a right to comment on those amendments, because there is no hearing of that item in a committee hearing. By not allowing the public to comment on amendments, you are basically having agendas behind closed doors. I would ask the City Attorney to rule on that interpretation, but I'd also ask the City Attorney, if it's important for him as part of his code of ethics as an attorney, to report if a crime has been committed, is he must report a crime that be committed. I'm questioning that, because Councilman Perry has asked the City Attorney to look into the operations at the Sunshine Canyon landfill. I've come before the City Council and mentioned that there's been a misappropriation of funding. Not that I'm just saying it. All you need to do is look at the County Board of Supervisors' agenda from May of 2006, on June of 2006, they misappropriated over 6,600 tons of trash per week, comes to almost $4 million, over $4 million per year. I would think that that would be highly irregular and something that should be looked into. I'd also like to talk about an audit that was called for in last week's meeting. I find it irresponsible to call for an audit of the Disney Corporation's donation. The auditing committee has called for audits for Quimby funds, animal services, private attorneys used by the City Attorney, gang programs, police spending in Lawa. What action has been taken on all these audits? Now you're calling for an audit for Disney.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sacks. Appreciate your comments. Next speaker, Mr. Andrew Martin in the San Fernando Valley.
My name is Andrew Martin. I'm a Democrat, and rendered under Caesar, what is Caesar's, and under God, what's God's in the Van Nuys, the City Hall. We have a newspaper, the only newspaper here, which is clearly Democratic. And I'm completely opposed to having something like this in the office. I guess you City Councilmembers never go here and check out what's going on, but this should be removed from the building here, because it's completely and absolutely Democratic. I'm a Democrat, and I'm against that. The Government's Tenor Gazette should be banned from here.
Thank you very much. Yvonne Michelle Autry? Yvonne Autry? Candida Mares? Oh, Ms. Autry? Thank you. Ms. Mares, you'll be next.
I'm sorry for the delay. You know, I'd like to formally request that we, if you could extend public comments to three minutes in Inglewood, which is where I was born, we used to have three comments, I mean, three minutes, three minutes, like seven or eight years ago. But I'm now relocated, and I live here downtown. Last Friday, I advocated on behalf of the families and the children of downtown. Again, I'd like to encourage Councilmember Jan Perry and Jose Huizar, because the money allocated, which was in the sum of $2 million, which has not yet been transferred or awarded to the community downtown. It's ironic that you would give awards in honor of African History Month and Martin Luther King, and you speak about no child being left behind, but I find it really hypocritical that when you're given an opportunity to take action, to allocate and transfer the funds, to build and construct a playground for these children, it's not being done. And most of these children are black and Latino, Latinas. They're people and their children of color. And so it's very hypocritical to me that you're speaking and you're giving these awards after the fact, but now you can influence the development of these children, and you're not doing it. For two years, $2 million has been inactive. It was awarded, according to an audit performed by the City Attorney or the City Controller. Most of the children have been relocated, but the adults still need the playgrounds. This is a city-owned park. The children had been forced to play in the street. They were sighted. And these young children then had their first encounter with the legal system, because many of the fines turned into warrants, and so then they went into judicial system. So this seems to me like it's cyclical. I can call it institutionalized white supremacy or racism. At any rate, the ball is in your court. You have the monies. Please don't be hypocrites. Allocate the funds. Construct the playgrounds for the children and the adults, so that they will be adequately... Thank you. And also, the housing for the people that need it, not just the gentry who have the money to pay you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Mares?
Good morning, Mr. President. It's nice seeing you up there. Today, we honored African-Americans who are heroes in our community, Forrest Whitaker and others. But let me talk about other African-Americans and other minorities who are heroes. There are city workers, especially at DWP. Now, I've gone over and over again, and I'm like a broken record, because I keep coming back to you about contracts. And we had an article, again, on Wednesday about the Department of Water and Power and contract after contract, millions of dollars that are being stolen from the ratepayers. And it doesn't matter if it's a $5 million or a $5,000 contract. The good and hard-working people at DWP who will stand up and report the waste and fraud should be supported, but they're not being supported. Mr. David Nahai and Mr. Nick Pastoris will lead the department, and hopefully we'll be able to rid ourselves of some of those individuals who are doing wrong. But there was an individual that came before this body and one of its committees and lied to you, and then made an excuse and came back and lied again, and he's still there. Then he was in charge of the Chain Supply Department, and we found out just recently that that's in trouble. Now he's in charge of contracts and procurement with over $1 billion, $1 billion spent by the Department of Water and Power. You're asking ratepayers to accept an increase. And the sad part about that, Mr. President, Councilmembers, that rate increase is necessary, because the infrastructure of this city is broken. But until you hold the department accountable and you ask them to keep their rates down, you cannot go to the ratepayers and ask them for that increase. But for those DWP workers who have sworn to provide and to serve and to provide good water and electricity, we hope one day that somebody here will listen and that something will be done. Thank you, Mr. President, Councilmembers. I just hope that we'll stand for those people that are working hard for the city.
Thank you, Ms. Mares. And finally, in the San Fernando Valley, Miriam Fogler.
Hello. I'm here to tell you that I know in the history, since the beginning of time, leaders built big, tall buildings, big, tall towers all the way to the heavens, and the people rebelled against that eventually. And I don't want the same thing happening to any of us here. I don't condone violence. I don't accept it, and I don't want it to happen to any good people, no matter where we are, what. We need honesty, integrity, and ethics here at City Hall. And what's happening is that you're proposing to raise or to ask the people vote tax against themselves. Is this going to be taxed, the people tax, 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 and never anything to make cutbacks in CRA they're building here? You're talking about DWP wanting to raise our rates to fix our infrastructures. It's because of the CRAs allowing all this building going on, and you people don't do nothing about it, no moratorium on your building, and you're spending millions of our taxes on the buildings here. This is public money that you're using for these developers, and then you get the property taxes raised so high that the people can't afford it, and then you make it so unaffordable, and you're inflating the prices at the same time, and the banks are having a hard time keeping them. The whole thing is that there's a lot of corruption here at City Hall, and Wendy Gru, is this touching base? We need to re-evaluation in making H work here, instead of just giving you pay raises every year and not being scrutinized. It should be scrutinized. Your pay raises should not go through. We're having fiscal prices. Now, the city workers, they worked so dang hard, they took no raises at all, and they deserved the pay raises they got. They worked very hard for the city to make it work, our trash pickup, so we can flush our toilets. So you can't...
Thank you, Ms. Fogler. Your time is expired. Thank you very much. Madam Kirk, now move on to the next item, please.
Next item is item number nine, and that was called "Special," since there was an amending motion, and since then, the motion has been distributed.
I believe that was Ms. Perry's?
Yes, it was.
Yes, Ms. Perry. She's left. Okay.
Mr. President?
Go ahead. We'll handle the matter then.
Mr. President, council could vote on this now, since the motion's been distributed.
Okay. If there's no discussion, we'll open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That matter passes. Next item? Now we'll go forthwith, and item number 23 we'll go forthwith.
I think 14 first is the chair. Want to come to 14?
Next item is item number 14.
Ms. Garcetti?
Thank you, and I know Mr. Zine will want to speak on this, too. Colleagues, today, this is an item that's before us and taking a position on SB 999, which is Senator Lee's bill, which eliminates life without parole sentences for juveniles charged with first-degree murder. I know that this is a very controversial area for us to take a stand on, but I want to thank Human Rights Watch, the most unimpeachable of human rights organizations in the United States and probably around the world, for their great work. Essentially, what it says is it gives discretion still for life sentences for juveniles who have been convicted of first-degree murder, but it does not assign them automatically to life without parole. We heard some very moving stories, and I wonder if we might be able to call forward to the podium from Human Rights Watch, the author of the report that was before us, who testified as well in our committee hearings on this item, and the CLA recommendation to support this. We had, I think, some very moving stories about individuals who were at crime scenes, might have been lookouts, got convictions for first-degree murders in a disproportionate way, based on their race, based on their age, and found themselves sometimes having a life without any possibility, any possibility of parole. And I was wondering if you might be able to just share a couple of those stories while you hold my time, please, on this, and then I'll make some concluding remarks. Ms. Cale?
Good morning. My name is Elizabeth Calvin, and I'm a researcher with Human Rights Watch, and we've spent the last year and a half looking at how California uses this sentence with juveniles. Among our findings are the fact that in cases, in many of these cases, where there are co-defendants, these juveniles tend to be acting with adult co-defendants. But more disturbing than that is the fact that in 56% of the cases with adult co-defendants, the adults get a lesser sentence than the juvenile. What SB 999 does is substitute a sentence for, instead of the life without parole, these juveniles would get 25 years to life, also a very harsh punishment. Under California law, they would have to serve 25 years before being eligible for parole. There'd be no guarantee of parole. What this bill does is simply give the opportunity to earn parole, the opportunity to ask for parole. It gives a second chance to people like Anthony C., who was involved with a robbery, but his involvement happened in over a five-minute span. When a friend turned to him, he was 16, and said, "Do you want to come with me and rob these people?" And in a quintessentially adolescent way, his response was, "I don't care." And they walked over to these other people, and as the robbery started, the victim said to Anthony's friend, "If you don't kill me, I'm going to kill you." And Anthony told me, "I thought our bluff was called. I thought it was over. I turned around to pick up my bike." And as he bent down to pick up his bike, his friend shot the person and killed him. And under California law, Anthony C. is responsible for that other individual's actions, and he is serving life without parole. Sarah Cruzan was also 16 when she was convicted for a murder, but her story began earlier. She was born into a family where her father was not present, her mother was a drug addict and abusive. At age 11, Sarah was introduced to a man who began to sexually abuse her, and by age 13, she was operating as his prostitute. When she was 16, she killed him, and she is serving life without parole. I think it's appropriate for me to mention that our research has also shown that California is the worst in the nation as far as racial disproportionality in the application of this sentence, the worst in the nation. And for African-Americans, it means that they are 18 times more likely to get this sentence than white youth, and Hispanic youth are five times more likely to get this sentence. The last thing I would say is our research shows that approximately 45% of these cases of youth sentenced to life without parole are cases in which the youth was either involved with a different crime, or aiding and abetting, or an accomplice in some way. In some cases, they are... In some cases, they are in the getaway car, or they are standing next to the door as a lookout, but they were not the person who committed the crime. And what SB 999 does is merely give them a second chance, give them a chance to prove over 25 years in prison that they've chosen a different path, and the parole board can make a decision about whether to release them or not after that period.
Thank you very much, Ms. Calvin, and thank you for the great work at Human Rights Watch. Colleagues, we have this before us. It's a report called "When I Die, They'll Send Me Home," which says, eventually kind of summarizes it all, that for folks who are convicted as juveniles without any possibility of parole, the only way they're going home is the day that they die in prison. I wanted to highlight what Ms. Calvin mentioned, and I want to say what this is not first. This is not a get-out-of-jail-free card, despite what anybody will say. What this does is it says that people are eligible for a 25 to years-to-life sentence in which they have to go before parole boards, which in the last 30 years, I think we'd said, a first-degree murder charge, there has not been parole granted. Is that a correct statistic, or there have been extremely, extremely few--
Some less than 1%.
Less than 1%. Colleagues, let me give you this statistic. Juveniles convicted of murder or any other crime in the world who are sentenced to life without the possibility of parole, we found only seven cases around the world outside of the United States. In California, there are 227 alone. The rest of the world, seven. California, 227. Now, we are very smart in California, we are very smart in the United States, but I think the other, you know, 5.5 billion people around the world have some humane systems in places like Western Europe and in Asia, throughout Africa. We have overwhelming the population of folks who say, "You will never be rehabilitated. It doesn't matter if you were an accomplice. It doesn't matter if you weren't the trigger person. You are never getting out of there." We heard that case that was just mentioned, of a young teenage prostitute abused by her pimp, who she then killed. At what age was it? 13, 14, 15? 16, sorry. Thank you. 16 years old. But she was brought into a life of prostitution early on. She is never getting out of prison without a change in the law. Never. So this does not let people out. It lets them go into the same system that the adults go into. It allows them to have that sentence of 25 years to life, so that maybe a 16-year-old, one day, when she's in her 50s or 60s, after a life that started out with oppression she didn't ask for, may have the possibility of not dying in prison. I ask for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Zine.
I believe in human rights. I also believe in respect for human dignity. And serving nearly 40 years in the Los Angeles Police Department, I have discussed with murder suspects what they've done. Many times, they have no remorse for their activity, for their action, and we're talking about first-degree murder. We're talking about an individual that commits first-degree murder, willful and wanton killing of another human being. I'm sure we look at our crime wave, and we look at the reduction of crime in the City of Los Angeles, we look at deterrence, we look at reality. And I think when an individual commits first-degree murder, the most heinous crime in society, in civilized society, we can't then soften what are the rules? What are the regulations? What are the consequences? We're not talking about children. We're talking about 16 to 18 years of age. When you look at the criminal justice system and how much evidence it takes, and the trial, gathering of evidence, the witnesses, the family, the survivors, the mothers of the murdered victims, the fathers, the sisters, the brothers of murdered victims, what about them? Who's going to stand up for the victims? When someone takes a life, first-degree murder, and they are convicted, the consequences need to be severe, so we don't have more gang murders, more drive-by shootings, more little babies being killed in the streets of the City of the Angels. I think it's outrageous when we have a reduction in crime and we want to soften the penalty for consequences of the most heinous crime in civilized society. We're not talking about a traffic violation. We're talking about first-degree murder. We can't reduce the sentence. We can't show that we've got to reduce the rules. All we'll do is encourage that we're a soft society, and what about the victims? I'm concerned with the survivors. I'm concerned with the grief that they have to suffer every single day. And we see it on the news when an innocent child is killed. Mr. Reyes's district, there was a young baby who was killed. What about the relatives of that young baby? What about the gang-bangers that terrorize society that want attacks from the vendors, or they're going to use lethal force? When you're talking about a 16- or 18-year-old that gets convicted of first-degree murder, I will venture to say that is not their first time in encountering the criminal justice system. They have done another crime or multiple crimes before they reach that degree of a first-degree murder. They join a gang, they participate in activities, and I've seen the gruesome signs. Blinkie Rodriguez, whose son was killed in a drive-by shooting, Blinkie's trying to help reduce gang violence in the City of Los Angeles, in particular, the San Fernando Valley. I think about Blinkie and his family. I think about the survivors. So if someone's going to go out and commit first-degree murder and get convicted, these are people who are convicted, 6- to 18-year-olds, 16- to 18-year-olds. I think the consequences need to be severe, and we need to think of the innocent people who are victimized by them. And I think that this particular measure softens. We don't need to soften. We need to strengthen the rules. We need to strengthen the laws so we can protect the innocent people, so when you go to the ATM machine, you walk back to your car, you're not robbed and shot and killed and lying there in a pool of blood. And then we're going to say, "Well, it's okay. You're a 16-year-old. We don't want to have a severe sentence on you." If they do those crimes, they need to pay the price, and the price needs to be severe if you're killing an innocent person. So 16- or 18-year-olds need to have the serious consequences. We send a very sad message, a very soft message, if we want to reduce the consequences for, again, first-degree murder to a 16- or 18-year-old. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to ask the CLA analyst to come up. I had a couple of questions, and a couple of comments that were made earlier were a little different than my perception when I read the report. The thing that is of interest to me is that the current law allows the judge to make certain discretionary decisions, or I guess, or is it the judge, or is it the filing DA, to make certain discretionary decisions on the front end?
It is the judge.
It's the judge.
Who has the discretion.
Okay. Is the issue that in this legislation, they believe the judge is not using that discretion?
That's true.
Okay. And then, I don't quite understand, is the fact, is the 25 years a determinate or indeterminate sentence?
I don't know the answer to that.
Because I think if it's 25 years and you're out, or is it 25 years and you go to the Board of Prison Terms and they review you every-- Okay, so it's indeterminate--
--and then you have to get reviewed. That's correct, Ms. Calvin, right? It's 25 to life, and the review has to happen at the parole board. It's not, there's no, certainly no--
Absolutely no guarantee of release. And if I may, it's, I believe that, with all due respect, that it is not fully discretionary with the judge. The law says, the sentence shall be life without parole for 16- and 17-year-olds unless, and then the case law hasn't interpreted the discretion to be narrow and to be with good cause. And in our review, we believe that few judges are finding good cause--
Okay.
--to give a lower sentence.
Let me just ask you, because is your support of this because the greater discretion on the tail end of the system where the person has served the time, you know more about them, and that you could make a better judgment as to their character, is the place to put the discretion as opposed to having the issue on the front end at 18 years, 16 years old, and you're sending them to prison for life? The assessment after they've served the time is better spent? Is that what your position--
That is part of our support for this with this, based on recent developments in understanding of neuroscience and adolescent development, and that someone who is still, who is 16 or 17 is still developing, so it makes more sense to be judging whether they should be locked up for the rest of their lives or not at a later time.
Yeah. I thought that was an interesting point, because we've heard recently on some economic development studies and people with education that kids pretty well, I guess, formulate their personalities by the time they're in grade school. And I was kind of interested that it looked like, at least in this one court decision, that they say it appears that they're not developed until they're well past 15s.
I think that is correct. The O'Rover v. Simmons case with the U.S. Supreme Court relies on what is really relatively recent understanding of brain development and the ability of teenagers, not only to make decisions that make a good judgment as to the consequences of actions, but I think more importantly, that they are still developing until, as individuals, and making decisions about directions in their lives until their early 20s.
Okay. Colleagues, when I read this, my first inclination was to not be supportive of it, because I thought that it was eliminating the very discretion that we want judges to use. But now, with an explanation, I have less concern if the discretion is putting a person into the Board of Prison Terms, to where they're being evaluated, and it's not a determinate 25 and out, but you must go through the cycle, and you have more to assess the development of that person in that environment before they are given that decision. And the other side of it is, is the history of the state of California, that not many people get through that system, at least not the first several times. So there is a thorough review. So it is a matter of it's indeterminate, not a determinate. It pretty well eliminates many of my concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Seeing no other speakers, Mr. Garcetti to close.
Just very briefly, thank you. You asked the question--
Wait, we have--
Oh, sorry. Ms. Reyes?
Okay. A couple just popped up. I'm sorry, we've been having a little problem with keeping the names on the screen today, so, Mr. Reyes, first time.
Thank you very much. I, with a heavy heart, I hear this conversation. I see the, what's at stake here? The example that was given, Anthony C., in many ways, we do have a manipulation of our youth when the gangs from the prisons direct young people to do certain things. That's been documented. I'm not saying anything that everyone doesn't know. But I also look at the fact that we, as a society, have not given our youth a chance in many, many instances. You know, Anthony C. was there because he had nowhere else to go. He went to the wash because there are no playgrounds in his area. He's there because his schools are failing him. That's our fault. But what I see in this legislation, some flexibility, I'm not saying we're getting softer on crime. The individual who shot and killed that person, I'm assuming, is accountable for that action. But Anthony C. was turning around. He put his bike down, he was going away. And he's going to spend the rest of his life in prison. So I see this legislation going down a very fine line. But with a heavy heart, I see that we, as a council, have significant influence when we make these resolutions known to the public. So I understand what I hear from Congressman Zine, because he was in the trenches. When you look at the eyes of the mom and of those who have been shot and killed in my district, and it happens a lot, there's a real consequence. But I think of the mom of Anthony C., I think of the brothers and sisters, the family of Anthony C., who's wondering, who's helping her son? He did not pull the trigger. But the process sees it one way. We're asking for that flexibility. I don't see it as softening. I see it as trying to become a little bit more human in how we treat our youth, because we are failing them as a society. And so I think there's a direct link between how we treat our youth and giving them a chance to become good citizens. You know, in this day and age, we spend more money in prisons than we do in schools, and that's a real fact. We, as a country, have the highest population in numbers than any other country in this world when we incarcerate people, the highest number. And we're supposed to be a democratic society, a free society. There's a contradiction we have to wrestle with. So I rise to support the Minority Report on this. The day, when the day comes that we, as a city, can look at our formulas and say, "Why do we spend so much money in certain places that aren't showing the greatest need and choose to ignore the greatest need?" Then I see ourselves working in a more constructive manner, not an emotional one, but in a constructive manner that says, "We are changing the environment to give our kids a chance." Then I can see how we can be so cut and dry. But we're not there yet, and we need to give our youth a chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. For the first time, Mr. Alarcon.
Yes. This is clearly a difficult issue, because it strikes at the core of what our society wants to be. And, you know, it's easy to rise to the occasion of the throw-the-key-away mentality to be safe. But in a more reasoned society, we have to take all of these factors being discussed into consideration. I frankly think that SB 999 is a conservative measure. It still requires that the perpetrator serve 25 years as a minimum, and only then they would be subject to a review of their performance. And those standards are going to be set by the prison board. So I don't assume that there's going to be, the floodgates are going to be open with all these hardened criminals who committed a heinous act between the age of 16 and 18 that are going to be running wild in the streets. It's going to take a long time to implement. And I think that, in the context of all the challenges California has in terms of the need for prison reform, where California is probably one of the worst models in the nation, and then when you compare it to the world, as Mr. Reyes was referring to, we are simply not a compassionate society. And nobody here wants to give somebody a pass who commits murder. That is, nobody is suggesting that. But in fact, we are saying they must serve 25 years with passage of this law. So I think this is a reasonable approach. I think it moves California in the direction of creating real rehabilitation in our system. We seem to forgot about that responsibility of our penal system, and yet, we bear the brunt of what happens when convicts come back to society without proper rehabilitation and create more crimes. So I commend our President Garcetti for pushing this, because he's on the minority side of the political equation, and it takes somebody with real commitment and understanding to a social cause to be able to do that, and I applaud him for doing that. So I'm happy to support it. I think it's reasonable. I think it's conservative, if anything. But more importantly, it drives the debate of what kind of society do we want to be with regard to the statistics that were being spewed out by Mr. Reyes, Mr. Parks, and Mr. Garcetti, and even Mr. Zine. We can't fix these problems if we don't try to tackle them.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. Mr. Rosendorf, for the first time.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am very appreciative of all my colleagues' comments on this issue. Could I ask the attorney to come back up or somebody else to talk about this for one more minute? CLA? Okay. I just want to be clear for all of us to know. Right now, as I'm reading this, it says, "The CLA further reports that supporters of SB 999 argue that, one, scientific evidence shows that the adolescent brain is not fully formed until adulthood. The United States Supreme Court abolished the death penalty for minors based on the findings that juveniles are still developing their identity, that even a heinous crime committed by a juvenile is not evidence of irretrievable depraved character. And, three, racial disparities in sentencing practices in California are worse in the nation, with black and Hispanic youth being sentenced to life without parole at rates 20 times and five times higher than white youth, respectively." Would you explain that third point? Would you explain that third point?
That's an analysis that Human Rights Watch conducted in their evaluation of the California situation, and it's 18 black youth for every one white youth.
Why is that?
It's, um, you know, it's a matter of who, how the cases are considered, what's brought forward. Human Rights Watch might have more detail on that.
Is Human Rights Watch here? Oh, please, help me on that. We just did African-American History Month. This was a full chamber just a few minutes ago. Explain that.
Again, I'm Elizabeth Calvin with Human Rights Watch, and your staff person here is accurate, that is, 18 African-American youth. Get this sentence for every one white youth. I think there are a lot of reasons that that happens. What I can say for people who are perhaps wondering, well...
Hold on one second, please.
Well, is it because African-Americans commit more crimes? When we narrow down the data and look at arrest rates and then compare arrest for murder of African-American youth and arrest for murder with white youth, California is still sentencing African-American youth to life without parole at six times the number that white youth get it. There is not a good explanation for that, except that I think we can say something is happening in the sentencing courtroom. And I don't, we don't know whether it's inadequate representation, whether it's bias in prosecution, whether it's some problem happening from the bench, but something is happening if you're talking about comparing arrest for murder with arrest for murder of white and black, and California is still the worst in the nation. I think, yeah, it's a sad commentary on our state.
A more generic question. Take the war on drugs and all of that. One out of three, if I'm not right or wrong, one out of three young African-Americans go through the criminal justice system, one form or another, as they're growing up? But that isn't the same with whites. So there is a disparity in all forms of criminality in terms of the criminal justice system when it comes to African-Americans.
Yes. I was remiss also in pointing out that this issue should be of particular interest to Los Angeles because it has a disproportionate number of the young people serving life without parole. So while our state has, our county has 28% of youth aged 14 to 17, we have, in fact, 41 or 42% of all the youth in California who are serving life without parole. And there's a reference specifically to the disproportionality, the racial disproportionality specific to Los Angeles County as well in the report.
Well, I really appreciate Mr. Garcetti bringing this issue up. I really have problems with the criminal justice system. In part, I think it's a criminal injustice system. We build more prisons than we do schools. We incarcerate more young people than we teach and train and get jobs to. And the monies we spend on keeping a person in prison is so over the top that the Prison Guard Association, which is another insanity of power where they make a lot of money, and it's just over the top. But by raising this particular issue, I can't help but stand and support you on this. And personally, frankly, we're not going to get into it in this conversation, but the death penalty itself, I'm against. Two wrongs don't make a right. I believe in rehabilitation, and I believe in incarceration for life if it's a murderer who's out there murdering. But kids need to get an opportunity to see if we can move them in another way than life in prison. So thank you for this, and I'm sure my colleagues are all in agreement with that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Zine, for the second time.
Yeah, a question for the CLA. When was it put on the books to add life without possibly parole for the 16- and 18-year-olds? When was that originally put on the books?
This was part of a proposition that was put forward to the voters in 2000, I believe it was.
2000 what?
I'm looking for the specific date. Portions of that proposition were challenged in court, and they were thrown out as well. And that's why this is only applying to youth in 16 to 18-years-old, as opposed to youth that are even younger than that.
But this hasn't been the case in California for centuries. This is relatively new to the state of California.
Yes, it is.
And it was put on the books because of what reason?
That was a measure that was put before the voters on a proposition, and, you know, that was a decade ago that the details of that were put forward. There were concerns about rising youth crime and some evaluations of how that was proceeding.
More 16- and 18-year-olds involved in gang activity, more 16- and 18-year-olds involved in murder. So the rules were changed, supported by the voters, to enhance the sentence for those that were killing innocent people. In other words, it always, it hasn't always been that 16- and 18-year-olds would have life in prison without possibly parole.
Here it is. It's Proposition 21, which was passed in 2000, and at that time the...
So a proposition that was passed by the voters eight years ago.
And that was looking at youth as young as 14. So it wasn't just 16- to 18-year-olds, it was 14- to 18-year-olds. And the courts threw out some of the concerns for, or some of the measures in that proposition related to 14- to 17-year-olds because they were too restrictive.
So they decided 16- to 18-year-old was the appropriate sentence, the appropriate age, to add this condition when they're convicted of first-degree murder?
Well, that was left. That was left in the original proposition that was passed. That was the component that was left.
Okay. And the voters approved this eight years ago?
In 2001, yeah.
In 2001. The voters approved this measure? Okay.
With your indulgence?
Sure. You just hold my time for it.
What's your understanding of the history there?
I'm sorry. I would beg to differ. The law that we're talking about was enacted in 1990. Proposition 21 in 2000 did extend to age 14 for some crimes, the life without parole sentence. But it was Proposition 115 in 1990. As I understand it, it was a part of a kind of omnibus proposition that dealt with a variety of issues, including discovery for prosecutors and other things. And my understanding is that this was clarifying a question about whether life without parole could be applied to juveniles or not, and that's how it was passed in 1990. I might add, prior to much of the new understanding that we have about adolescent development.
And maybe that was done when we had 1,100 murders in the city of Los Angeles, we're now down to less than 400 murders in the city of Los Angeles. Maybe that had something to do with it. The concerns I have is that when our, my colleagues come here with a family and ask for a reward to apprehend a murder suspect who killed their family member, and I see the grieving family stand here in this chamber, and we all vote to support this reward for that individual who committed this murder, how we all chime together and say, yeah, let's get that person, let's do it, and many times they're apprehended, we issue the rewards to apprehend them? I remember those people. I remember the people who stand before us and ask us to help and protect them. We have an obligation to protect the innocent that the murderers go out and try to kill. We have an obligation to protect the innocent people. So I, in good conscience, can't support, and after nearly 40 years and seeing murderers and knowing that a person who commits first-degree murder, I don't think they're going to be rehabilitated in 25 years or 50 years. But the concern I have is that we send a strong message that we want to have a safe Los Angeles. I think this sends the wrong message. So I'm opposed to it. But, Mr. Garcetti, I have a question. The Minority, or the Committee Report was to deny, Mr. Weiss and I were on the committee with you, we voted no. There was another report that came through another committee?
Through ad hoc. I moved that. There was no objection. So what's on the table right now is the ad hoc gang report, Mr. Cardenas' communication, which was in favor of 999. So if you're opposed, you need to be voting no on that. That's the motion before.
So what happened with the report from our committee?
It's here, but I moved the other one.
Okay. So that report is going to not be voted on?
It'll be part of the record.
Pardon me?
It'll be part of the record, but it will...
But I want to make sure that my concern in my vote is to the right measure...
Right.
...and the right motion that's going forward.
There's nothing procedurally going on, Tricky. It's in favor is a yes vote. That's what the ad hoc gangs committee communicated from the chair. It wasn't a quorum, so it was a chair communication. And if you're opposed to that, as you have very strongly articulated, you'd be voting no.
I think maybe someone else will be opposed to it, too.
Yeah, I think there may be another person or two as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, to close.
Okay. To conclude, I know we've got to get out of here. We have a couple other things. I just want to say, in response to your question, Mr. Zine, who's concerned? I am. I'm concerned about those folks, the victims' families who are in support of this measure, who are in this report, the victims' families, they are concerned, too, more than any of us about their own loved ones who are there. I believe they should be punished, and they are being punished. The issue here is what level? And if it's just a simplistic, soft versus hard, we can get harder. We could shoot people for assault, and that would send probably a strong message, and maybe Mr. Zine would support that. I couldn't. I'm glad you draw the line there.
First-degree murder.
But the first-degree murder...
That's different.
There are adults right now in prison who will get to go to a parole board, and kids who were 16-years-old when this happened will never get the chance to go to that parole board, where it is extremely difficult, and where they make sure the public safety and the victims' families are heard from. That gives me the reassurance that this is the right thing to do. It is tough, and it's smart, and so I ask for your support.
And 70% of the people who go to prison return to prison. 70% return to prison.
And on this one, one last statistic I was going to say. What was the recidivism rate for the first-degree murders who are given parole that you mentioned?
It is 21%, and that is for any crime, including misdemeanors.
That's for any crime.
And that's a U.S. Department of Justice...
And that's where our parole board works. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No other speakers on the queue. We do have two requests for the speak from the public, since we... Ad hoc did not. The city attorney is deciding whether we need a public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, we had two public hearings, and this one did not have a quorum.
Is my understanding, since there's nothing else that was adopted there, no official action, we had the public hearing in Rules and Government, so I would move, I know this, and I respect the folks that have filled out the cards on this. We do have, I know, a loss of a quorum coming for us.
Very charlie.
Under that legal requirement, I would move.
So if there's no motion to hear or have a public hearing, seeing none, then we'll take the vote. Madam Clerk, please.
No, it's just one. You vote no.
Okay. You should vote no, too.
Yeah.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, two noes.
That matter passes.
Rules and Government Report, please. Without objection.
It's received and filed. Next item?
Next is item number 15, and that was called special because there is a card from the public. Next item, Mr. President, is item number 15, and that was called special because there is a card from the public.
Okay. Mr. Sacks, on item number 15.
Thank you. I'm here to address a housing department policy, not necessarily a REIT policy, but a housing department policy in general, since this item refers to the housing department. On the 18th, this passed last week, the housing department had, the city council had an item on its agenda involving communications from this community development agency relative to a block grant float loan to fund the purchase of the Ford Hotel...
I'm sorry, Mr. Sacks. We have to very specifically speak about the REIT program, how it affects the specific REIT at 3616 West Marcy Drive. But if you'd like to bring that up in general public comment at our next meeting, we'd be happy to hear it.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, but I'm addressing a housing policy.
Right. And under the Brown Act, it's not general. You could discuss the city policy and everything city government. There are many things that are housing. We have to address this item, and unfortunately, that's how California...
Under the Brown Act, if you bring up, the city is, this is from the county...
I'm sorry. We've been very clear about this, and I'm trying to be extremely kind about this. We do have the opportunity for you to express this in a different item, but not on this one. So if you would take that time to do that, we would be most appreciative. And if you do have comments, we'd be happy to hear them on this rent escrow account program at 3616 West Marcy Drive.
Sir, I'm only talking, you're using the Brown Act to defend your actions, and I'm using the Brown Act to, as a cause for my actions. So you can either defend it, or you can call it off. I mean, you use both...
Do you have comments on this? If not, we will close the public hearing.
Comments on the housing policy?
I will ask you to say those in the next general public comment, then. Thank you very much, sir. And the public comment on this is closed. Can we please open the roll on this item? Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next is item number 19, and that was called special by a card from the public.
Okay. Mr. Sacks?
Again, I come before the county board, the city council, regarding CLA policies. On the 23rd, a housing department meeting was held...
Sir, I'm sorry. We have before us on this one the City State Legislative Program sponsorship for Bills AB 1751 and 1724. I understand your point, Mr. Sacks, but it is, it has to be germane to the items that are at hand here. That is what general public comment is for, and we would be happy to hear those comments, but we can't do that at this point. So do you have anything on AB 1751 and 1724?
The question I have is, what protection does the public have by the Brown Act? That's the question I have.
General public comment. And thank you.
Public comment.
Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. Sacks. That will close our comments on item number 19. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next is a special one, and that is a resolution by Councilmember Rosendahl and Councilmember Labange.
Okay. On the findings, sorry, Mr. City Attorney, are you making the findings, or is Mr. Rosendahl?
See Attorney. Hello.
Are you making the findings on special one?
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. President. I will cite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Just today, the city of Santa Monica notified the city of Los Angeles that it will be meeting with the FAA next Tuesday to discuss safety at the Santa Monica Airport. Immediate action is required for the city to express its support of Santa Monica before the January 29 meeting. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Anybody else on the findings? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Pursuant to Rule 23 of the city council rules, that item is now before us. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, City Attorney. The bottom line is safety. There's huge safety issues regarding Santa Monica Airport. The FAA wants to talk about a strategy of dealing with it. The city of Santa Monica and the city of Los Angeles, if we go on record here, questioned some of their strategy. The city of Santa Monica is going back to meet with the FAA. I want our unanimous support to support them in a partnership of positiveness, of safety for their constituents and for our constituents. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. And if we can send that forthwith, and if we could also send the item on SB 999 forthwith to, without objection, I think it's 14. All right. Next, order of business, please.
Next, Mr. President, there are motions for posting and referral.
Okay. Those motions are posted and referred.
And that clears the desk.
Okay. Do we have announcements of a business nature, colleagues? If not, do we have any adjourning motions today? If I can please ask everybody in council chambers to rise for our adjourning motions. Thank you. And just as a note to the public, I know we received a public comment card after we closed public comment earlier today, but we will keep that for Tuesday's meeting. Thank you. If I can please ask everybody in chambers to rise for our adjourning motions in tribute to those who have passed. Ms. Gruel.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd ask colleagues that we adjourn in memory of Betty Wilcox, who passed away on January 22, 2008. Betty was born on November 7, 1920, and passed away at the age of 87. Betty was a resident of the San Fernando Valley for 45 years and was truly an example of the community. She was an active member of the San Fernando Valley chapter of the American Cancer Society and spent much of her time with others in the community at the Robert W. Wilkinson Senior Center in Northridge. Betty is survived by her three children, Nancy John and Rob Wilcox, who we know works for Controller Laura Chick. She's also survived by her grandchildren, Matthew, John, Carly, and Robert. I know she was a very special person to Rob, and that we send our thoughts and wishes to Rob during this difficult time.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two adjourning motions. The first one is behalf of the family of Aaron Mull, who was murdered, unfortunately, on Saturday, January 12, 2008. He was born in 1989.
He was born in 1989 in Buffalo, New York. He attended Communion Christian Academy during his formative years, later at 54th Street School, and then later Webster Middle School. He was an 18-year-old graduate of Crenshaw High School, a former band and choir member. He was enrolled at L.A. City College and planned to transfer to a four-year college this fall. He had also received numerous college scholarships because of his musical background. He had an affinity for the percussion instruments. He began his formal training with Mr. Al Tarver at the age of seven, started performing at Little Drummer Board with the Crenshaw High School marching band. At the age of 10, he was actually teaching students in the summer band camp on the drum line. He is survived by his brother Jocelyn Mull and his father Daryl Lucy and a host of family members. Also, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Biron Taylor, who was recently the victim of a homicide at a party at Long Beach on Saturday, January 19. She was one of two teens that was killed that evening. She was a sophomore at Redondo Union High School, survived by her mother Carmen Taylor-Jones, who served as a field director for the late Congresswoman Juanita Milliner McDonald. Her father, Daryl Jones, and her brother Bradley in Barrington, and her sister Bailey. The vigil was held last night in Long Beach. Services are this coming Tuesday at Faithful Central Bible Church, 333 West Florence in Inglewood.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Alfredo Menjivar. Alfredo Menjivar, a longtime resident of Pico Union, passed away last week after a long illness. Mr. Menjivar, having arrived from El Salvador about 40 years ago, became a dedicated community leader in his neighborhood during some tough times in the early 1980s. During that time, criminal activity had taken over entire sections of our neighborhoods, especially in Pico Union. Mr. Menjivar, along with another community leader, Susana Aragín, refused to give in to these forces. Together, they organized a door-to-door campaign to educate and mobilize their neighbors in the fight against crime. Over the ensuing years, they organized community cleanups. One cleanup alone attracted over 1,500 volunteers just from Pico Union, created the Volunteer Police Watch that had local residents riding with officers to report crime, and established the largest neighborhood watch program in Pico Union. Today, the results of their collective effort are very apparent. The neighborhood is safer and cleaner. In fact, the neighborhood now has a business investment district, a new community center, new community plazas, a new fire station, and a new police station, all because Mr. Menjivar decided to get involved. His efforts over the years will obviously never be forgotten. Mr. Menjivar is survived by his loving wife, Lucy Menjivar. Brille this tomorrow. Que Dios descanse. May he rest in eternal peace. Pico Union celebrates you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Zine.
Mr. Joseph Anthony Fogelstrom passed away January 17. Born May 20, 1947, longtime resident of San Fernando Valley, touched the lives of many Valley residents. Joe Fogelstrom was also a master triathlete, having completed the Hawaii Ironman competition numerous times. Passed away from this world doing what he loved most, riding his bicycle and running in the mountains of California. A true athlete to the end, he will be greatly missed. Survived by his wife of many years, Valerie, two sons, Anthony and Ben, and his stepchildren, Olivia and Bruce. Joseph Anthony Fogelstrom graduated Notre Dame High School with me. We were classmates, spent a lot of time together, and may he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. No other adjourning motions. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? We will next be in session on Tuesday, the 29th of January. We thank our members of the audience who came here and our viewers on Channel 35, and we will look forward to seeing you 10:00 a.m. in John Farrow Council Chambers on Tuesday, the 29th of January. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned. Have a great--